Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our board meeting for September 10th. Just a little bit of logistics. Tonight is a special board meeting where we're having a public hearing on the short-term vacation rental, starting first on the agenda. So there'll be plenty of opportunity for the public to speak, and everybody's entitled to speak as part of the public hearing. I don't ask you, limit your speech to three minutes or less, so that we can get through all the public. And if somebody else has already gone through what you've discussed and you're just there to repeat and say the same thing, please acknowledge that other person and say you're saying the same thing, so we can move on and capture that. One other bit of information, our village clerk, who is normally here to take minutes, Pat Kuhn, is hopefully expecting her first grandchild this evening. So we're all excited. We're waiting to hear the news, which we haven't heard yet, but we're hoping that it couldn't hap-- she predicted that would happen on the night of the board meeting, her daughter, the prediction that I think is coming true. So with that, I'd like to ask everybody to stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I knew our county legislator, Brendan Kearney, was coming. She texted me and said she was going to be here, but maybe she's expecting to come at seven, so we'll wrap her in at the regular public meeting. So now I'd like to have a motion to open the public hearing and a public comment session for the SDR short-term meeting.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So carried. So first will be the public comment session. Do we have, Karen, do we have the list? During the comment session, you, I'm going to request that you need to come to the microphone. You need to identify yourself and your address, and then have the floor. Jim, Jim Atkinson. You can't defer your slot, your time.
I did say I'm not going to speak. I didn't know that that was an order of speaking.
Okay, alright, sure. Just introduce yourself, Mr. Staley.
Good evening, Mayor and Village Board. Thanks for hosting us tonight. See if I can raise this.
It's on.
Yeah.
It goes up. Don't tighten it too tight, because I'll lose the apple over.
Dan Staley, Rhinebeck Village resident, former Rhinebeck Town Board member, federal political coordinator for the National Association of Realtors. I want to thank you all for the hard work on this issue, I believe, and the need for such a law, but with some of the things, I agree with some of the things that are in the proposed law, but not with some of the things that are not. Some of the things I agree with is that the property must be unoccupied. I agree with that, I think that's a good part of it. The noticing of the neighbors, so everybody is on notice that the property is being rented. Having an agent on duty when you're out of town, so if anything goes wrong, someone is there to look after the needs of the home. An inspection by the zoning enforcement officer yearly, to make sure the code is up to code, excuse me. Some things I do not agree with, only 15 permits out of approximately 1,100 homes. Seems very restrictive. Owners only allowed to rent for 16 days in one calendar year. Again, very restrictive. The lottery system just seems to be a little unfair. These items I feel are very restrictive. Personally, lost a buyer I was working with who felt the proposed short-term rental was too restrictive. The young couple ended up going to Woodstock to purchase their home. I have quote, I'll hand you all a copy of this, there's a copy of the note there, I won't read it, just says that there were, "I'm alarmed at the change in the stance from the village around Airbnb short-term rentals. The property is both an investment and a home for us," in that order. If people choose to purchase elsewhere, because of such restrictive laws, go other places for the real estate, our market will suffer, and our prices will decline. I asked the board if they would consider, if this was considered when developing the law, proposed law. Moving forward, I believe the board is on the right path, but I think you can do a little better, and we'll have no problem working with you in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan.
Sir?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next on the list, you want to start in your, Jim, do you want to come back up?
Hi, my name is Jim Atkinson. I live at 24 Livingston Street in the village. I'm a realtor in town. I'm a sales manager for Central 21 Alliance, the Jay Atkinson team. I think a lot of the concepts of what the town board's looking to do is, has merit. I do believe the issues that we have.
Can't hear you. Closer to the mic. Closer to the mic, okay. Should I start, start over? What would you like me to do? Okay, Jim Atkinson.
I'm 20 years old. Bradley Moore. Okay, Jim Atkinson, I live at 24 Livingston Street in the village. Been here for almost 35 years. I'm a realtor with Central 21 Alliance, the Jay Atkinson team. I believe that what the village board's looking to do has merit. I believe, and believe, I agree with Dan, that the homeowners need to be present, and need, feel that annual checks with John and his committee is the way to keep track on what's going on with homes. I do believe restricting it to the number of homes is not correct. There might be another venue in between limiting the permits and limiting the number of days. So I think we're on the right track, we need modifications to make it work for all parties involved.
Jim, just a question, I just want to make sure before I go, there's, we're clear that we're only talking about unhosed rentals.
Okay, so this is--
Absolutely should be hosted by the--
Well, this law applies to allowing unhosed rentals.
I don't believe that, we don't want unhosed.
You don't want that, okay.
Do not want unhosed.
At any--
At any, it must be owner occupied or for them.
Okay. It gets, it gets--
Dicey.
Yeah, it gets so confusing. We've basically agreed that, what we have on the, on the books, that if you have a primary residence and you are home, present, while you're present, you have the ability to rent out a couple of rooms.
Yes.
What this, what this law addresses is the ability, if it is your primary residence, and if you vacate that home for a short period of time, this would be the law that covers that situation. So you would not be, this is the only condition that we're talking about here.
Well, I would agree with what Dan said, it's either the homeowner's there, or a person representing them as their agent should be present.
I understand this is for unhosed homes. Say someone, you know, plans a trip, and they want to go away for a week, and they decide to rent their home out. They wouldn't be allowed with this law. They would, they would have to have foresight into, you know, preparing and wanting to do this. I think the confusion is that this is short-term rental laws being compared to bed and breakfast. As you know in the law, there is no call for food. Again, this is a long-term thing. A lot of people don't want to run a business out of their home, they just want the right to, you know, rent it if they go away for a week, just for a little extra cash. With the rising cost of the village tax base, I think homeowners deserve to have a right to a revenue stream such as short-term rentals like this. We all know it's, you know, the fire department, we love it, it's great for us, the police department, but I think those two things are tremendous burdens on this village.
So, just to be clear, the two of you are saying two different things.
No, we're not.
I think--
Go ahead.
Just say what I said, just say you believe what I said.
Okay, so let's move on, if you're, if you're in agreement, we're going.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I believe it's Kelly, Campbell, Connaissance?
I know, she's my doctor. Good evening, Kelly Campbell, President of the Dutchess County Association of Realtors. I stand here with my colleagues. Governmental Affairs Committee is a large function of our association. We do our best to be involved and to have a voice at the table in all of our municipalities as it relates to property ownership rights and realtor issues in Dutchess County. The issue has been discussed with our Board of Directors and Governmental Affairs Committees, and we have taken the position, as indicated in the call to action that we had, we are, while we are in favor of short-term rental regulations in municipalities, we want to ensure that property owner rights are considered. With that said, we believe that you and the trustees are in, are good intentioned in trying to regulate this burgeoning industry. The Hudson Valley is one of the most desirable locations in the United States for tourism, and with increased tourism comes the influx of visitors looking for places to stay. Our hope is that you will pause and rethink the current proposal of the limitations, and consider the ramifications that this proposal, this proposed local law will have on the rights of property owners in the village of Rhinebeck, I mean, yeah, Rhinebeck. Our association stands ready to assist you in amending what has been proposed. Several local municipalities have taken extended periods of time to come up with these proposals. We just ask that you step back, take a look and listen, and do what's best for the community as well. Thank you.
I'll just offer a comment, Kelly, that maybe you're not aware, or maybe most of the people who are here, that this has been a two-and-a-half-year venture, right? So we've taken a lot of time, first, starting in April, May of 2017, by forming a committee that was run by trustee Nunaker, that came up with a recommendation. After that recommendation, we went into almost a year of scheduled workshops, hearing from the committee, and hearing from lots of residents during that course of time. 2019, we started, one of the things we heard was enforcement. We have laws on the book for hosted rentals and bed and breakfast, and there was a lot of concern about, we had too many. So we went out and made sure that we had the enforcement policies in place, and we spent several months making sure we had the enforcement and could do the, exercise enforcement by our zoning enforcement officer, John Fenton, which was a very viable exercise. And then we went into the mode of preparing the draft for this. So, two-and-a-half years, we've spent listening to our residents and working with our community to come up with what we think is a, this draft.
Can I ask?
Sure. Since I responded to you.
How did you come up with the numbers? Fifteen in the lottery and 16 days per property, that's quite interesting.
I'm sorry, couldn't quite hear you, did you speak up a little?
I'm sorry, how you came up--
Please, go up to the mic. Thank you.
I was just wondering how you came up with the numbers, the 15 properties by the lottery and 16 days per property.
Through discussion.
Okay.
A lot of it was, the original committee, when they exited, came out with 40 days.
There was concern that that was too much.
So we were looking and working with all the committees, all the groups, in terms of what the compromise would be in terms of number of days, number of weekends, talking to our residents to say, how many consecutive weekends, non-consecutive weekends, all the kind of stuff, to arrive at a number. Another factor, and that was, by federal law, you can have 14 days and not report it.
Okay.
When you go over 14 days, you're supposed to report it.
Okay.
So at 16 days, now you're, now you're becoming legitimate, and you need to report this as part of your home expense. So that was one of the driving factors. In terms of number of units, it really was trying to have a starting point based on where we were. Nothing more. We don't know if we'll have 15.
Okay, so very well could be. If you have 1,100 rentals, as Dan said, would you allow maybe 500 of them?
No, we have, we have 1,100--
1,100 residents, so I apologize.
Yes.
Residential, okay, if you, I mean, that seems like such a small number. If you have, I, I know, as being in real estate, I know a lot of properties up here rent for the season.
Do you know how many we have today?
By the way, this is a short-term rental, so if it's 30 days or more, then that's fine.
Then that's still fine, okay.
That's, under New York state law, there's always been a transient rental distinction versus a month-to-month lease distinction.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
So we're not touching--
You're not touching that, you're just touching the Airbnb type of residence?
We're not touching B&Bs or on the book, we're not touching hosted rentals that are on the book.
Okay, just unhosed.
This is strictly home, unhosed rentals.
Okay, thank you.
Of less than 30 days. Donna, you're up.
Thank you, good evening. I'm Donna Warner, I live in the village. I've been here for the last 18 months. I know the whole history, as have, by the way, many of the residents here, here tonight, and some of whom operate B&Bs, Airbnbs, and those of us who don't. So I'm writing to express, let me, let my clock begin right now, okay? I'm writing to express a couple of, some concerns about the proposed non-hosted short-term rental law, and to propose several modifications. First, I just want to say, the simple, in my, in my opinion, the simple and most effective way to meet the goals stated in the law is to prohibit non-hosted rentals in our residential zone, while permitting them in the commercial and gateway districts. There are also many non-hosted rentals close by in the town of Rhinebeck. Like other communities, our village has been at risk of being overwhelmed by short-term rental businesses. With restrictive laws, Rhinebeck Village can join the list of communities in the U.S. and globally that have successfully limited or banned short-term rentals in residential and historic districts. And I have, I'm going to give you a copy of this with a list of some of those communities. Second, for the law to be effective, it will need to be administered and enforced on a regular basis, and I believe increased village staff capacity is needed immediately to administer this new law and the current room rental code. I don't think that I, Mr. Fenton cannot do this alone, so I asked you, that you consider capacity. Lastly, for the law to be effective, the provisions need to be clear and enforceable, and I propose some very specific changes. One, distance from other STRs, the requirement to be located within two lots of another permitted STR, does that include hosted room rentals as well as unhosed? So you could add the phrase, or permitted home, so that's a question and a little bit of a confusion. Notification of neighbors, the proposed text says the permit, that application, notice of the application shall be provided to adjoining property owners within 250 feet. 250 feet is good, but the word adjoining, I think, should be deleted, so that the notification is going to people, to the rear, to both sides, and across the street. So please consider deleting the word adjoining, that's number 3A. Number 3C, agent definition and complaint process. The text says that you must engage the services of an agent, but the agent is not defined. Can this be the high school kid next door? Is it some kind of person with special credentials? You know, that kind of thing, maybe it could be Lily. So please provide a definition. It also says, and this was a little confusing, they need to be there, available 24 hours a day, to respond to tenant and neighbor concerns. It's not clear how a tenant or a neighbor would actually, who do they contact if they have a concern, and when? And then it says, be capable, that they also must be capable of responding with two hours of notification from the village. So that's not clear either, who in the village, on a weekend or at night, would be notifying the agent, or of what? So my suggestion is, could this be clarified so that the process is clear, for, for what the village is responsible for, and whom, and how neighbors or a tenant would notify of a concern? Almost done. Let me get my second page. One of these is, I think maybe your attorney wants to look at. Enforcement of 16 rental days. Unenforceability of this provision has been raised in previous board meetings. In July, residents proposed a solution to enforce the 16 rental days, days which we think can be easily circumvented, leaving neighbors confused or as ad hoc supervisors. So, the proposal was to require in the code or administratively, that permit holders notify the village clerk by email of their proposed rental days, say, two days before, that this would be correspondence that could be posted, public correspondence on the village website. So that would be an example for people to just know, neighbors, when the, the facility was being rented. In terms of the use chart, this, there is proposed, there are proposed changes to Section 126 of the use chart, and it's for the allowable use chart to have a P, small p, used to denote the requirement of a permit. That's what the proposed law says. But if you go to the allowable use chart, it does not refer, reference a permit requirement for a small p use. Rather, it says that the symbol P means the use group is allowed as of right, and the symbol SP means the group requires a special permit. My suggestion is to look at this and to make sure that there's a bridge between the permit requirements in the law and the allowable use table, so that someone doesn't come in and say, well, the allowable use table, as it appears to me, says, no permits required. So, please, in closing, I just want to mention one other related matter. I think people are a little confused here. There is a law on the books which allows unlimited hosted rentals, one to two bedrooms for any number of days. There are absolutely no limits on it, so people can go forward, you know, so this already exists in the village and has for a couple of decades. But I would add, this particular law expands the capacity of non-hosted rentals to three bedrooms and six occupants. And there has been a similar proposal to expand hosted room rentals, and I do think that residents should rightly have the opportunity to evaluate this non-hosted law in light of any proposed changes to the hosted law. So my question is, is there a proposal to expand the capacity of the non-hosted, excuse me, of the hosted rentals? And if so, when? Or is it going to stand as it has been for two bedrooms? One to two bedrooms? Anybody want to--
I think as Yogi Bear said, it's hard to make predictions, especially about the future.
Well, you know what's in your mind, so--
Donna, I know that, I can tell it's in my mind, is that these things may be addressed, but I have no, what am I saying, no predetermined number, and I would actually say, since we're taking, biting this part of the apple first, we would also be looking at if any changes happen in response, would this would be decided in harmony. So obviously would have to be, everything would have to be taken in consideration. But I think for--
I don't know what that means.
Well, it means, Donna, it means that, I don't, you know, is it possible? I don't know. We don't, we haven't worked that out, we don't know.
Well, I mean, as you said, Bear has proposed expanding the posted rentals to three bedrooms.
We haven't, we haven't taken it up, we haven't really--
Yeah, and that was last October, I believe. So it's out there, and I, and I do think it's important in, that people, if they're looking at burden right now, you know, for, for this law, that they be thinking about the burden of any changes. Now, the other tack to take is to restrict the posted rentals, also put a limit on the number, you know, so, thank you so much. Thank you for letting me go over the three minutes, appreciate it. I'm going to leave a couple copies, so for the reference to the, sorry.
Oh, she's Dorothy?
You're the most familiar face.
Dorothy, yeah, very far. Thought I saw you come in.
So, just so you have the specifics.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Hello, I'm Dorothy Varren. I own the house at 9080's Market. I've owned the house since 94. I have three apartments. I rent them long-term to people who need a home. When I moved to Rhinebeck in 89, it was a small, unique, historical village. It had an IGA, it's walkable, it's livable, and what I see now, it's a business. And people who want to have unhosed are doing this as a business. Rhinebeck Village is not a business unless you're in the business district. And I really oppose the non-hosted. And I have seen changes where people have had non-hosted, and have either had to sell them, or host them. And that's where I stand.
Louis Turpin.
All right, I got a fan.
She doesn't know me, but I'm-- This one.
I can, I can take fans in any form. Good evening, everyone. My name's Louis Turpin. I've been in the village of Rhinebeck for an awful long time, somewhere near three decades, and in fact, it's interesting that I sat where you're sitting, discussing the master plan on which our zoning is currently based, as the chair of your planning board. I'm a professional planner, I'm an architect, my practice was relocated from New York here to Rhinebeck, and I've raised a family here. I'm now happily retired, okay? I have submitted my comments, it's a three-page dissertation to you. I don't know, with Pat's rapid departure this afternoon, if it's in everybody's hands. In the interest of time, I'll, I'll try to summarize with the mayor's comments about, if people have said things that you agree with, speak out. I assume the same thing, is the same with things you disagree with. I'll say that I agree with most of what the real estate folks had to say. I think it's important that we have this opportunity in our village, and know that I have no vested interest. I have never rented my home, I don't have any immediate plans to rent my home, but it, I believe that this is an important thing for us to allow, and I'm speaking as a planner here, in our community, and I'm going to explain why. And to disagree with the woman that just was here, it's not about being a business. In fact, one of the greatest challenges, I will tell you, that planners face today, and I wish you guys had had a professional planner on your team for this, because you would have been told this, is that one of the greatest challenges is finding a way to make a beautiful community like Rhinebeck affordable to the young people in our community, and to the seniors that have an empty nest, no longer have family at home, and they have this magnificent home with many rooms, and they'd like to go away and bring in a little bit of income by renting their place as an, what is it, unhosed, non-hosted rental unit, for an extended period of a couple of weeks or so while they're on vacation. Now, that, that young person could be a teacher in our schools, because we fight to get teachers in our schools, or firemen, or police officers, or other people that are service, parts of our, important parts of our service community, but living, anybody that pays the taxes, and I think I pay more than most in this community, anybody that pays taxes knows that this is an expensive place to live. And so I believe you guys have found yourself convinced by someone, and I, I'm, I know, I understand where you come from, Richard, that you've been here for two and a half years. You sound a little bit defensive, where was Louis Turpin two and a half years ago? Well, like I said, I sat there for several years on the master plan, and it was a bunch of happy faces out here, until you got to the, to the nitty-gritty, and this is how it works. So don't let yourself get defensive, but understand that it's, that having affordable a way to make your home affordable in Rhinebeck is very important to you. If it's not, it should be. And whether that's for a person like myself with an empty nest and trying to pay exorbitant taxes, or my kids who would love to live in Rhinebeck but probably couldn't afford to do so, that's an important factor that I don't see that you've got in here. The other factor about this, and, and I, I'm amazed that this doesn't seem to be addressed, is that we are a tourist community. Is there anyone here that doesn't believe that the vibrancy of this community-- Is there anyone here that doesn't believe that the vibrancy of this community is because we are a destination? You know, I know that when I, to agree with the person that spoke before me, 30 years ago when I moved here, it was a slightly different community, and yeah, I miss Kilmer's IGA. But the reality of it is, what has kept this community alive is it being a destination place. And whether those people are coming here for the Sheep and Wool Festival, or whether they're coming here for a family wedding, or whether they're coming here for Fall Foliage, what allows them to come here right now is the non-hosted rentals, okay? Whether they're, you know they're there or not. There are a lot of them. And if you impose that grossly overstated set of regulations that you propose on them, they will go away. And the economic benefit of tourism will slowly leave Reinbeck, and it'll go, Dan, was it Woodstock you, or somebody mentioned Woodstock? They'll go to Woodstock, they'll go across the river, the area in which we're currently competing with right now. And, and, and slowly businesses in Reinbeck will shutter, and property values will go down, yet the taxes will still need to be paid. So don't forget that there are, this is an opportunity, not something you fear. And I, my last comment to you will be that it seems as though someone has convinced you that short-term, non-hosted rentals are different than us. They're not, guys. They're just like you and me. I can tell you this because of the ones that are in my neighborhood that have been there for years when they come, they're just like you and me. They just want to come to Reinbeck, spend a weekend with their family, go to event, and leave. This is not Daytona Beach. This is not spring break. This is a place that attracts people just like you and me. And, you know, we have, the purpose of zoning is to ensure compatible use for the benefit of all. We have professional businesses in residential communities.
Are we going way over three minutes now?
Maybe. I'll close, but my.
I haven't cut anybody else off.
The person before me spoke longer.
I know.
The, the, and I didn't interrupt her because I disagreed with her.
Yeah, please have respect for anyone who speaks.
The, the, the people that come here aren't different than you and I. They just want to come here and spend some time. I know this because of people that I see coming here for unhosted rentals, and the people that I see in my vacation community on the Cape that do that. You don't treat all of the other potentially non-conforming, non-compatible uses with this long list of regulations. You, you cannot, should not, and perhaps with lawyers behind them, will not be able to do that to this one use. It's just not right. You're missing an opportunity. Read the rest of what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Martha? Martha, there you are.
I live on Lorraine Drive in the village. These are my comments. Communities all over the country, and actually all over the world, are struggling with the commercialization of social and communal life. Some have acted to affirm the importance of the quality of life of their villages and towns. With this proposal, Reinbeck Village is going in the other direction. Unhosted rentals are clearly a private commercial use in residential zones. There is no reason they could not be restricted to commercial zones, but in fact, we are, this proposal helps them to further invade residential zones. There is no sensible rationale for permitting such uses, and in fact, the proposal doesn't even pretend to include a rationale, although zoning and use regulation requires that a rationale be suggested. If these uses are permitted, they must be tightly regulated and aggressively enforced. This proposal fails to provide these basic requirements, as many Reinbeck residents have been articulating for more than two years, and others are repeating this evening and clarifying. The language of the proposal is vague. Details such as the operation of the critical lottery are omitted. The proposal actually expands the permitted capacity of unhosted room rentals, so it is not that restrictive. And enforcement is left, to a large extent, to neighbors or to self-policing, which is an approach that has failed in virtually every other sector and use. This proposal is a gift to some commercial interests, but it is a betrayal of other commercial interests, such as existing legal B&Bs, which follow health and safety regulations and zoning. It's also a betrayal of the quality of life in Reinbeck Village. Thank you.
Patty, Patty Headman?
Hi, my name is Patty Homan, and I'm a licensed Realtor. And as a member of the Dutchess County Association of Realtors, I stand in support with my colleagues and their statements and concerns. And as your neighbor to the south, we know that you are one of the first to adopt such restrictive regulations on these Airbnbs or short-term rentals. And I just want to add that everyone will be looking, all these municipalities will be looking at what you are adopting, and if, if these restrictive regulations encroach upon somebody's primary residence, that's, that's where our concern comes in, and that's where I hope you will, you know, think very carefully about someone's right to own a home. Thank you.
Linda.
So I'm gonna say that I agree with some things that are said by some of these people, and I, I agree with some things that are said by others of these people. I think Donna brought up a lot of technical points. Donna's worked on this for the two-plus years that's going on, and the points she raises are, are very valid, particularly that the process has to be documented, defined, so that people know how they're going to know about someone doing this, and how they're gonna report problems, who they're gonna report to. All those details really do need to be fleshed out, and I think it's important. For the Realtors that are here, I think that you need to become more familiar with the proposal. The wording is confusing. I know I was confused the first time I heard the, the proposal a year and a half ago, or two years ago. So when you say it is, it is, you must be a full-time resident, means you have to live in the house 240 days in order to have a short-term rental. It doesn't mean that you have to be in residence there. And I think that's the confusion I was hearing tonight. And also, two or three people gave an example of whether they, an owner can rent the house for a week so they can go on vacation. And I agree that they should be able to rent it for a week. The law allows them to rent it for two weeks, the way it's proposed right now. So that's not an inhibition. I think what we're really trying to do as a community is keep what's special about it. I'm a full-time resident here. I love Reinbeck. I moved up to Reinbeck because I love Reinbeck. And I think that if you allow this to become a commercial endeavor, where people are buying two and three homes in order to do short-term rental full-time, the nature, you're saying no.
That's not good, that's not what I said. Let the owner of the. Hold on, let her speak, please.
Right. If you, I'm giving the extreme example, but let's say it's a month. Now, and I'm not a contiguous month, so it's four different weeks that they want to rent it. That is not really the best environment to have in your neighborhood. We'd love to encourage more families to live here. We'd love to have a sense of community. When you have a lot of transient people in and of the town, you lose that. So I think the last two and a half years was an effort to bring all these divergent needs together and come up with something that's really manageable. And I think that the village board and all the participants in this worked really hard to come to something. Everyone has some issues with some aspect of it, but overall, I think it's wonderful and I fully support it. Thank you.
John, oh, John Waterston. John, no comment?
No.
Are you signing? Okay. Maddie, same? Kevin Curry?
Kevin Curry, I live on Locust Grove Road. I've actually been involved with this, I think, since December of 2015. I think that's kind of when things really.
Are we admitting this at this point?
Yeah, kind of hard. I would like, we all understand that if you restrict non-hosted, that does impact property rights, and I think we ought to be careful when we do that. I agree with what the Realtors said. I think it should be less restrictive than it is, but what I believe more is listening to every side. So I'm gonna take Linda's position. I don't like this ordinance, I think it's too restrictive, but I think it's respectful of everybody that's talked. There is no doubt in my mind that if you had unrestricted, non-hosted rentals, and it blew up to a big degree, that would not be good for the community. But, you know, what we think is big, too many, we all disagree. 15, I think, is way too little. But it's a compromise. And if we believe in a community fabric, I think we have to compromise. There's just been too much friction on this. There's too much, you know, people want it their own way, and completely their own way, and if they don't get it their own way, something's wrong. I think something's right. I think we had a good, long process. And I hope it can be less restrictive in the future, but I want to thank, thank the board. And I even want to thank, thank Brant, we've disagreed a lot, but we've really had dialogue, and that's what a community's about. So I support what you're doing. There is one suggestion I would make. Leave it at 15, but when somebody does a non-hosted, one year's probably too short. It could be more like there are three, a lottery for three each year, and maybe somebody has a five-year permit, assuming that they respect all the ordinances. Thank you.
Bob Maglino?
My name is Bob Maglino. I live at 22 South Boston Street. I've been a resident of the village now for 38 years. I was one of the first Airbnbs in Reinbeck and the first approved by John, the first approved by John Fenton. I've been running Airbnb out of my home now for about four years. I fully support the board's present proposals as it is. I too, like Kevin and Linda, I think of it as actually a compromise, because I remember in the first, beginning of these meetings and these open sessions like this, that there were many people that were totally against any type of unhosted, and I am to this day. But I can live with a compromise, and I think the compromise that you come up with is a good one. I have one question for the gentleman that said you lost a real estate sale because the person moved to Woodstock. Didn't you say that they wanted it to be their home and an investment?
It's an investment first, their home second.
Oh, okay.
A young couple.
Because I was gonna say, if it's gonna be their home, then they don't have a problem.
That concludes everybody that's on the list. Is there somebody that did not sign and would like to speak? Now's your chance. Yes?
My name is Cynthia Kernan, and I'm the former owner of the Gables at Reinbeck. And I'm Cynthia Kernan. I was the former owner of the Gables at Reinbeck Bed and Breakfast, and currently am a innkeeper at the old Reinbeck Inn, which is in the town of Reinbeck, which, but what the rules that you make impact on us. One thing I just want to address, Mr. Turpin, he made a comment about, you know, kind of heads and beds, all these tourists need places to stay. And my answer to that is permitted, regulated bed and breakfast, that all the things that we have to do to become a inspected, fee-paying, permitted bed and breakfast. And, you know, we're being impacted by several hundred in the past few years, Airbnbs hosted and unhosted, quite honestly. And, you know, we are very, you know, part of a good thing for this community as well, the bed and breakfast, because we take care of our guests, and we bring people in, and I just think that's a consideration too, that, you know, be permitted, just like we have to be. And we, if anybody wants to know, you know, we pay all kinds of fees, we go public hearings, we do state inspections, we have to be, some of us, I had to have signs, exit signs in my bed and breakfast, you know? And it's a business. But it is impacting us, and my answer to him would be, well, then let them come to a, a bed and breakfast that is permitted. I just wanted to state that.
Okay.
Cynthia asked one of my comments, can I?
Sure.
Clarify mine? Thanks.
Please keep it brief, though.
How in the world do you expect me to do that?
Okay, so I want to clarify what I said, because I do agree with you. I think if this, if this proposed legislation was trying to do what you described, I would wholeheartedly support it. But the point I was making is that the people who are using this are not trying to become a business, per se. They are, the reason I think this is important in communities, and important in our community in particular because of the taxes, is because it is young families that, that go away for three weeks in the summer and would love to rent their place for three weeks in the summer, that go, people like myself with an empty nest that might travel for a couple of months over the course of a wintertime and would like to use their house that way in order to not have to leave the community. I agree that, that we have to establish, in fact, I have a home in Chatham, Massachusetts, their non, what is it, non-resident rental unit, whatever it's called here, their law addresses that issue, is not nearly as restrictive as what you're talking about, but allow families and teachers and, and empty nesters to do what they do. But they are inspected, they pay fees, they have to register. What you have is, is way too restrictive to be functional in a community like this one without doing harm, unintended harm. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'd like to have a motion to close the public comment session. Have a second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So carried. We're now into a public hearing for the board. Board, I want to give the board time to comment if they so choose to want to comment based on the hearing tonight.
I'll start off. I first want to thank everybody who has shown up, because I hope that I would appear to be thoughtful, but not, not defensive. I have listened here as, I've heard a lot of people, I think, make very reasonable and valid arguments from all sides of this issue. And I really do see us, the board, as trying to forge a compromise. We can't, we're not gonna, I, I am uncomfortable coming down on totally one side or totally the other. We've, we've heard from people who say, and it's slightly different, we've heard specifically from people who say, I rent my home out during Sheep and Wool, and I go stay at my sister's. Some people do that for the fair. That was actually the specific time, the short, much of the unhosted rentals that we've heard about. And we were, at least I was thinking, in creating this, where I was responding to what I heard was a pretty direct need from the community. And it seemed to, that the way we were crafting the law would allow somebody in that, to have these uses, and these are uses that are unique to our area, and it's something that makes our area special, having these three-day weekend events. And that does, I haven't heard anybody that's come to us and say, I rent out my house for a week while I'm away. I have heard people say, I rent out my house for, for the weekends. I don't know if I want to say much more than that, other than we are really. I don't know if I want to say much more than that, other than we are really trying to craft a compromise, and I feel like everybody, everybody who's come here has spoken in good faith. I've tried to listen as closely as I can and weigh all of the, weigh all of the arguments, and the result is a compromise. That's what I, that's what I would say. Oh, I'll add one more thing.
Three minutes.
The other thing that I would say is that, that we are, you know, we are pioneering in this, and it's something that we're going to find out. If it's not working in some way, we'll have to revisit it, that this is a beginning, it's a step, this is not, may not be the final action that gets taken on it, but this seems like a reasonable first step. And as with anything that we do up here, if it's not working, we should reconsider it and try to figure out a better way to do it. So I go into this, again, thinking away from compromise, and also having an open mind that we have to see how this works.
So I'd like to add something there. I think, first, I want to compliment the participants, those of you that took interest in all of this, and some of you know who you are, you blasted through this process, and I've been, you know, very proud to be part of the process, because I see that the community has been very much engaged and very thoughtful about it. And I think that's the key thing, that we've had a thoughtful discourse on this matter for a very long time, people have put a lot of hard work into it, and most importantly, I think this compromise that we've come up with really reflects a variety, a range of views, and that's the key thing. And I want to echo what someone else said, it's really what we're supposed to be about. It's not one view or another taking precedence, it's about the compromise. And to echo what Trustee Luth has said, nothing's perfect. We may need to do some revisions. Some of you pointed out that there are administrative issues which we certainly need to address, and I think that's part of the second stage of this process. So no law is going to lay out all of the do's and don'ts in terms of process applications and so forth. We will get to that and have that same discourse and dialogue with all of you. But I think we're moving forward, and that's an important factor, and I want to thank everyone for participating, and also for the Board and their thoughtful presentation and discourse.
I'm going to break rank with my two trustees, my two friends and peers, and I'm going to be very brief. I'm, I'm not supportive of this, because I'm not supportive of unhosted. I really do believe that after serious consideration and contemplation from a constituents, this has the potential of tearing the fabric of this community. And I'm not going to open that door, and I could continue, because there's an awful lot of things that are problematic with this. It's very hard to argue with the points that Donna Warner made, with, I think, genuine gaps and holes in this, this legislation, despite the fact that we've been at it for two and a half years, and with the best of intentions. But at the end of the day, this Board, like any Board, is supposed to have the best interests of the village, the municipality, and I don't believe this is in the best interests of the village, so I'll be voting against it.
So this is a close call for me. Frankly, if this, and I'll be short, too, if this were the town code, I would probably vote for it, but I believe that village life is, and I want to compliment everyone, I think that maintaining the character of the village is everybody's objective here, and that folks have a different idea of what the impacts of this law are going to be. But I don't think we look for a commercial solution of hosting tourism in the residential, you know, in the residential district for anything. I mean, the residential district is home life, and it is the residential district, so we don't sell drums in the residential district, we don't, you know, we don't have retail, we don't have these other things. I mean, I understand there's a tourism need in Northern Dutchess, but I don't think that's, should be satisfied by the residential district in the Village of Reinbeck. I just want to point out that I think there's a good inventory for hosted rentals. The, the code allows people to have accessory dwellings as, as a hosted, so the code also emphasizes that we want to encourage the building of accessory dwellings, because that was part of the original architectural characters, or character, was to have carriage houses and things like that. And I think there are quite a bit of those properties that have like an accessory dwelling above a garage. I know for a fact, from campaigning for, you know, probably four times, that there are a lot of two-family dwellings. Now, if you're in one dwelling and you rent the other dwelling, then it's still hosted. So I think there's quite a bit of untapped inventory for bed and breakfast that we're not utilizing now. So I, I agree with John that I'm just not going to, oh, and I, originally, we had the restriction for, for non-hosted, for two bedrooms only, which Donna brought up, and I, and occupancy limit of four folks, and, and we have changed that, and I'm not willing to go there either, so, but it's a close call for me.
Okay. I too would like to thank everybody for their input into this process, and the course that we've taken to try to come up with a solution that does not alter the character of the Village of Reinbeck. I think where we, where we started was with that, was what is the character of the Village of Reinbeck, and how do we maintain that, but also, how do we help those who need to live and thrive and stay in the, in the village was an also concern, as well as, we wanted to make sure that those people who are here, who don't need it, were not impacted by anything that we did. So it was a real, it was a lot of careful consideration that went into crafting this proposed legislation, to move forward, to come up with something that too, was something that we could bring to the public. And tonight is the night when we're bringing that to the public, and I want to thank you all for participating. I also want to thank the Board. The Board has dedicated a lot of time and resources to be able to work on this, and so that's, you know, great, that's a, you have a wonderful Board, is what I'm going to tell you, you know, that is willing to take the time to work and put the dedication into doing this. So I thank you all. So with that, we're in a public hearing. I'd like to have a motion to go vote on the proposed legislation, which will be a roll call.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Yes. Now I'd like to go to vote by the Board.
Can I just ask, would you entertain some of those words modifications and clarifications? I think there, one of them, I think, is particularly, maybe Mr. Fenton can speak to it, the allowable use table reference, the adjoining reference.
With respect to the use chart, we could put a notation down at the bottom, basically stating that if it's permitted use, it still requires a permit.
Yeah.
So I would refer to council on that. That's just, that's an easy amendment.
Would you amend, take it, do you need the word adjoining?
I think 250 feet is 250 feet, whether-
The word adjoining-
No, I understand. I still think you're just going to do a 250-foot radius, and maybe it's not-
The joining would actually, might, can you be more restrictive if you say-
That's what I'm saying, I'm saying-
I mean, you could strike it if you want, I'm, I'm going to vote against this, but 250 feet is-
If you, if you leave the word adjoining, it means you can only notify-
We're not going to do that, though. I mean, it's a practical matter, they're not going to do that.
I think it's 250 feet.
Right, so if you leave the word adjoining-
I think we're wordsmithing, as referred to legal. Does adjoining limit you to front, rear, side?
Not as I read it.
No?
Okay.
Okay. And I know a lot of the issues, Donna, that we've addressed throughout the hearing process.
Trying to be helpful on the point of the public hearing. There is an overriding statement in the code that's more restrictive. If there's anything that doesn't exactly fit, the more restrictive writing is what's important. So in fact, I think you're concerned, because it is in the other part of the coverage. It says there has to be a permit in this other part, so I think it's very clear.
Okay, so we've closed. Is there any, I'm going to refer to councils, is there anything that came up tonight that US Council would say we need to readdress?
I mean, there've been suggestions by everyone about everything, and it's up to the Board to decide whether they want to adopt this legislation or not.
Yes.
I think it's well-written, finally, and even though I'm not going to vote for it.
All right. So we're, yeah, we're open to forward discussion.
The other thing I think that's very important, that in more passing this law, there's a whole administrative section to this, which is yet to be crafted. And part of the art of, of doing some of this is figuring out what's going to be law, which really need to set down, and which part is going to be administrative, which we can have more flexibility to alter as, as we see fit. So this is not the only set of rules, and not the full implementation of what we're trying to do. The full implementation will take place as we set up the administrative rules and the process to actually make these permits work. So I just want to be clear that this is not, this is really only the first part of the iceberg, as it were. There's more paperwork to be done.
Any other comments on the Board? John, do you have anything else you would like to, anything you would like to offer?
No, I mean, I think, just not to correct Rick, but I believe that if we do adopt this, and it's in the zoning section, the zoning administration penalties, permitting and all that, basically, it just falls in line with the rest of the zoning-
The enforcement comes in under that.
So a lot of that you won't have to rewrite.
We did the lottery, we did the lottery-
On the lottery, all that, right.
All that kind of stuff, yeah.
Right, and the fees and so on.
And the, and the notification.
But there are mainly amendments that can be just flopped in there.
Well, there is the administrative permit we have to define, which I think is what Trustee Luth was referring to. We need to develop the administrative permit, you know, as part of that process.
Right, no, I'm good.
All right, we've closed. We had a motion to close the public hearing, right, which we've done. Now, motion, I'd like to make a motion, have a motion to vote on the proposed legislation. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Carried by three to two. Okay, we're going to do a vote by roll call, all right, for this, for this, so I'm going to start.
I vote no, Mr. Mayor.
Just for the record, you have a-
Don't have to read a resolution?
You don't have to read it, but you have a draft resolution in front of the Board, which is what you would be voting on.
That's true. I apologize. Right, thank you. Let me just read it, just for clarification. This is resolution, you know, for short-term vacation rental, whereas the attached local law adopting a short-term rental law was introduced by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Reinbeck on August 13th, 2019, and whereas a public hearing was held September 10th, 2019, at 6:00 PM at the Village Hall, 76 East Market Street, Reinbeck, New York. Notice of said hearing having been provided in accordance with law, and at which time all interested party had an opportunity to be heard. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Reinbeck determined this action to be an unlisted action based on our criteria found in NYCRR Section 617.4, and has determined that there are no adverse environmental impacts associated with the adoption of this local law, and the Village Board hereby issues a negative declaration in connection with the adoption of this local law. Now therefore, being enacted that by the Village Board of Trustees, by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Reinbeck, the following Village of Reinbeck Short-Term Rental Law, Chapter 120 of the Village of Reinbeck Code entitled Zoning, is hereby amended to add a new article as follows, "Short-Term Rental," with the attached legislation. This amendment shall take effect immediately upon filing in the Office of the Secretary of State in accordance with Section 27 of the Immiscible Home Rule Law. Okay? So, trustee, you've already voted.
Yes, I still vote no.
I, I vote nay, no.
Yea, yes.
I vote aye.
So this is where it becomes a tiebreaker. I vote yea in adoption of the law. Law is passed, I vote a three to two. That closes the short-term vacation section of the meeting.
Thank you, Walter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Kevin.
Say hi to everybody. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
I was sorry to hear about your father a while ago.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
I hope that's good.
Ladies and gentlemen, you've done a good job.
You only can use your-
I appreciate the time you've given.
Okay, fine, yes.
I appreciate that.
Move it up.
What's up? Really did, wait, five years, you keep saying, no, I mean, and I really do, I mean, this has been, it's an issue of necessity for the village to address, and going through it, I think, it's been incredibly bad.
So the original draft from the Commission is pretty much, you know, pretty close to what this was, but we wanted to plug in the variable, we wanted to get to the point where it was drafted and plug in the variables, so that's kind of what you guys did there.
Yeah, so I, seriously, I'm, you're going to get some hours in your back.
I don't think so, I think it's a lot, I think it gives a lot, you get a lot of kudos. Let me see. I might get-
So we're in the regular part of the meeting. So, so you can be up right now. I'm just going to find my agenda.
You have to, you have to open the-
All right, so, so I'd like to call the meeting back to order. If you want to have a conversation, I would prefer that you go outside, to not interrupt those that are here as part of the conversation. Much appreciated.
Wow. That is a big help.
And I'm just trying to find my agenda, because I don't have it. It's in my stack of papers, I can't. I got it. No, I don't have it. I lost it. I lost it. Is there another copy there? I lost it in my pile. Thank you. I'm going to move this up right now. Okay, back to the regular meeting. Thank you for staying.
Where are your son?
Excellent, wow.
We appreciate your, we appreciate your attention to our Village Board meeting. I just want to do, I'm going to change the agenda a little bit. I have Brennan, County Legislature Brennan Kearney, who's going to speak for a minute, and then I'm going to move to our resume or letter intent for MLE, while we have legal here. So we'll move that up on the agenda. We would love for you to stay, but we would understand if you don't.
I will be very brief. Good evening, everybody. Well done getting through that, folks. Last night in the legislature, we voted to return the Amtrak station to Amtrak, so not a firmly village-rooted issue, but hopefully it will help the Reinbeck community work further with Amtrak to continue with, to push for improvements to the station. Amtrak had been foreclosed on by the county several years ago, and so it was in sort of a holding pattern about ownership. And we also-
So that, just, that means the foreclosure is done?
Done.
You're not going to collect any, any-
No, they worked out an agreement, yep.
They worked out an agreement or whatever the guy-
Yep. And so now it returns to Amtrak, and so hopefully that will, I mean, I can't speak to this anymore, and I'm not on the Board anymore, but, you know, hopefully it will, will improve the chances of improvements to the station.
Can you define, define what the problems are?
What the problems are?
What, no, 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 what, I'm sorry, Paul first.
Okay, so probably we're the same, so I have a couple of questions, defining what some of the problems were, and give us a little context, but also, could you please- But also could you please tell us whether it specifically addresses the historic nature of that building and the whole preservation issue?
Well, I mean, I wish I had those answers for you. I mean, the basic issues with the station have been beyond even getting into the historic, simply the upkeep. You know, people have expressed concerns about the chipping metal on the stairs and the conditions at the platforms, the condition of the elevator. We also, I believe, are not, the station is not handicap compliant in some ways. And so conversations have been going on for years with Amtrak, trying to get some attention paid to the station. I believe that in the conversation, this, I can, I relate not as a legislator, but as a former town board member. The conversations that I had with Amtrak when we met with them was that certainly there were, the character of the station would be maintained. The question is whether there's funding for repairs. But again, the actual ownership was an impediment, so one, one step has been removed.
Is there, is there any, is the county taking a lead on that relationship or is it fallback on the town?
No, it comes back to the town. Totally, totally town, sorry. I'll help if I can. I'd really like the station to, I mean, you know, they checked it for safety a couple of years ago. They, they took samples of the corroding stairs and said that the corrosion is still not compromising the structure, but, you know, seems to keep corroding, so hopefully we'll move forward.
So what was the problem with Amtrak not being able to pay the bill? I'm sorry.
That I can't, I don't know. You have to ask them. You know, I mean, they're in financial difficulty and so there, there hasn't been, you know, there hasn't been, I mean, the town board can probably address it with more, I mean, it's been a year and a half since I worked on the issue. So the only thing that came before us was simply the tax issue to return it. But the town board, I'm sure, can bring you up to date because they have meetings, you know, I think with some frequency to try and address it.
Glad to hear this is a step in the right direction.
It's one of the things to be done, so. And then the other exciting thing that passed in the legislature was an independent redistricting law. So that, that's an exciting step for representing voters in Dutchess County. And I hope, I hope that'll, that'll have a positive effect for people in the county. Other than that, I'm working with some colleagues on the Environmental Board on getting the county to consider taking a renewable energy pledge in coming years and some other matters like that. But otherwise, that's about all the news that fits. Can I answer any other questions? Can I fix Amtrak for you? All right, good evening, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next I'm going to just change, only because we have legal representation here from both sides, for under the wastewater department, the Grasmer Letter of Intent. So I get a motion by the board to change the schedule to bring this up.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
We have a draft letter of intent that was drafted by legal counsel. Who's on the board. Is this it? Is this the latest, what I have on file here?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Okay.
Can I provide the background?
Yes, give me one second, I got lost on the screen, yeah.
That is, that's the correct letter. So I reached out to counsel for the project, for the Mencha LLC, and met with Victoria last Friday, just to get my own clarity, because I believe that, you know, Brad, that I want to represent this very big project as best we can to the entire board and ultimately to the community. And what tonight is about is providing the necessary documents so that the planning board, and if I misspeak, please don't hesitate to interrupt, that the town planning board can move forward with the next phase of the process, which ultimately is the development of the, not just the site plan approval, but the memorandum of understanding. But there are two issues, and one issue we are prepared to address this evening in the way of the letter of intent. And I think everyone on the board has had the opportunity to see the letter, and I believe, and Rich, you'll tell me if I'm wrong, that you're fine with it as well. It's not committing the board to anything other than the ability to continue moving forward with the memorandum of understanding.
Right, this will simply allow the planning board to proceed with the understanding that the village is willing to enter into an agreement on sewer and water, subject to a complete engineering evaluation, because you cannot sell water outside of, water or sewer outside of the village unless you have surplus capacity, and the engineers will have to determine that.
And I think everyone knows, I hope, Mr. Mayor, that the memorandum of understanding, what has been circulated to us is very much still a work in progress. And I don't know if anyone was able to see the email late this evening, late this afternoon, from our engineers concurring with Richard's assessment, and that, you know, we are working with the team from the Mencha organization, and we may have something much more robust to present to the board in the October meeting.
To be clear, this is not a memorandum of understanding, this is simply a letter to the planning board that says, look, assuming we have capacity, we are willing to enter into an agreement.
Yes.
I've read many, many letters of intent, and there's just, I just wanted to point out the biggest issue is going to be that if we have to do any plant upgrades, it would be at the, at the cost of
It would have to be, because if there is not capacity, then you can't sell it.
But, I mean, it says that we're, you know, we're willing, it's our intent to provide, I don't want it to get
If, if you have capacity. I mean, if the engineers determine that you do not have capacity, you can't sell it by law. And then you would have to enter into a discussion with the developer to say, fine.
It's just not, if you want the capacity, you're going to have to build it. Any letter of intent I've seen. You know, we used to do letters of intent for leases, and you, you say the rent, you say the lease term, these are the major things are in the letter of intent.
This is simply allowing
This is missing everything.
This is simply allowing the planning board to move forward.
No, we understand, yeah, I think we know what it is.
I mean, our bulk numbers show that it doesn't seem to be a problem. We have to basically fine-tune that with the engineers, but of course we need this letter first. So that's, that's the first.
As far as developing the memorandum of understanding, I, I think the best approach is to have all the three things on the table, you know, and not do this piecemeal. If we have sidewalk issue, you know, from the, if the developer's going to do any improvements on the sidewalks, if we have the wastewater plant and we have the water line issue, it all should be gelled into one agreement and not discussed.
Those are separate issues, I mean
Well, they should be in the same memorandum of understanding.
Well, again, you can't link sidewalks into whether you're going to sell capacity.
Okay, well
There's a question of capacity, that's
When we had the MOU for the gardens, we had the water and the wastewater in the same agreement.
Well, that's fine.
So why couldn't we add the sidewalk in there? I don't understand.
It has nothing to do with the sale of the capacity of the plant.
It's a municipal agreement with a private entity.
I understand that, and there's a cost to be paid for, the cost would have to be for the sewer and water capacity. Site plan issues are the town of Reinbeck.
What?
The town of Reinbeck, it's in the town of Reinbeck.
I know where it is.
The site plan issues are for that.
What I'm saying is if we were going to have any, developer improve any village sidewalks.
I do not believe that you can ask the developer to
If we sever the water and wastewater from that agreement, why in the hell would they ever agree to do it?
Again, I don't believe that you can tie those together. It's not the cost of, if they want to voluntarily
Could you do some research on that, please, and find some contrary research to buttress what you're saying?
We also believe it's an unconstitutional exaction. There's a governmental, I mean, well, before you find the mayor about positioning this.
Okay, well, again, this is the first I've heard of it, you know, we're
And you're asking for, you're asking for something completely out of proportion with the benefit that we're seeking. And so, you know, Mr. Mencha has indicated that he's willing to work with the village, but it cannot be linked to the water and sewer for several reasons, and
Well, that's an internal decision that we have to make as a board.
You certainly do not have an obligation to sell water or sewer.
That's right.
It's owned by the village.
That's right, that's why it all goes into the same MOU.
And the only discussion that I would add to this is when we met at the request of you to meet and discuss sidewalks, what we said was, unless we prove feasibility, we don't have a plan. I mean, if there's no feasibility and we can't offer them water and sewer, the project from being connected to our ability to supply is non-existent. So it's kind of like which comes first. So I think my only, my only, I understand that part, but my only question is, this is like last minute, all of a sudden now the town planning board, right, and there's been no communication from the town planning board on this letter of intent.
I mean, it's not that last minute. We've had meetings and we had a conference call with your attorney and your engineer about a month ago about this being on the agenda, and so, I mean, it's not last minute from our perspective.
The wording that we saw, it was, we just got, that's what I'm saying. We didn't have time to really focus on, we spent a lot of time today emailing everybody back and forth, trying to figure out what, who, what, where, when, and why.
We're hoping at this point to be at the level where we could offer you more detail, but there hasn't been enough progress being made due to the fair and due to, you know, the village hall being in chambers. We haven't been able to get all the information that we need from the village departments in order to complete those engineering reports.
That's true.
Okay.
Absolutely true, yes. We are now at the stage where we're meeting with engineers to basically fine-tune exactly what needs to be done to make this work.
Well, that's the feasibility study, I understand that.
Right, so all, all that's happening.
Mike, and I have a very specific question, Victoria. My very specific question is, the town board has been dealing with this for a long time, and now all of a sudden we need to have this letter of intent. Maybe this letter of intent should have been offered a long time ago, so that we are on board with where we're going, because we've already, as a board, voted and moved forward on doing the feasibility study. That we've done. And we're in the process of executing that feasibility study.
Do you mean the escrow agreement?
That's what we voted on, the escrow.
So you voted on the escrow.
Yeah, the escrow agreement.
That was on July meeting.
That authorized Mencha Grasmer to fund an escrow account, so that your attorney and your engineer could work on this feasibility study.
Yeah, right, that's what I think I just said.
What, what this is doing, this is, this is a little bit different. We're before the planning board. The planning board circulated it to your board many years ago, so there was initial contact. You probably weren't mayor at the time when that happened. I mean, this project has been going on since 2015.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's fine. So now the project is in the process of being amended. It was always going to get water from the village, and now they're also proposing wastewater service. And so as part of that amendment, the planning board has to amend its SECA review, its environmental review. So they're not willing to move forward on the SECA review on this amended plan without some indication that this is a possibility. So we're just looking for the paperwork at this point to say, yes, this is a possibility, provided that everything else proves out. We could, you guys could not even get to the point of adopting an MOU until the planning board completes that SECA step.
Correct.
So it's a chicken and egg situation.
Yes.
So this is just giving them a little bit of information saying, yes, we're willing to do it, provided we can make it work. It doesn't bind you at this point to anything. It says that it's contingent on there being adequate capacity, and that, and ultimately the MOU will contain the rates and other terms of service. So the MOU could contain any information on the upgrades. One of the things that's been proposed is the equalization tank, which would provide capacity for this project and potentially other projects within the village, there would be excess capacity. And so that would be the trade-off.
Well, are they, is, is the engineer looking into the size and analyzing the equalization tank now?
No, we have not done that.
Because I would think that would be like the first thing that you should be interested in, whether you, what your exposure is with that.
Yeah, yeah, no, we've been working on that internally.
Oh, okay.
What needs to happen, I think, is just some more coordination.
I believe that we're going to have something set up in the next week or two. So we are going to kick this off. We are kind of waiting, in the wings, to see what happens with the town planning board. Is this a recent request for the intent?
This is the first we've seen it.
Right.
Well, in fairness, Victoria forwarded to me and to a couple of others, John and then folks on the other side, that they, that these folks wanted to see this on the agenda. The confusion which we resolved when we met last week was, well, who was doing the letter of intent? And, and that was the purpose of tonight. So we put together something very quickly, Victoria did, got it out the best that we could because it was critical to try and have it discussed tonight, so there was
What I'm getting, this is a request from the town planning board?
Oh, yes, yes.
Which, I only want, can
It's not, it's not quite a request from the town planning board. The town planning board, it's part of the application process.
Okay.
They've said they can't move forward without some indication that you are willing to provide service in
Okay.
The only thing that they had was the earlier letter, and so they're sort of confused by the situation.
Okay, I don't even know what the earlier letter was, so we'll, we'll go on with that, let's not worry. I only, in, because on one thing, I kind of support Brandt, but on a slightly different aspect, because this recognizes for up to 70,000 gallons of water and wastewater service per day, there's also the aspect that it changes the grade or the level of our, has the potential of changing the classification of the wastewater plant, which is, which is a huge thing.
So we're happy to continue these conversations and talk about how, you know, at mitigation, what, what needs to be done in order to, you know, to make this work for both parties as far as upgrades to the plant.
So, because the feasibility study says, how do you handle the 70,000? It doesn't address then, how does the village go from a classification of 2A to 3A if we have to do that? Because, only because we may have the capacity, but when you add the equipment, it's not capacity that drives your level, it's the equipment that drives the level of your classification.
Right, well, I mean, arguably, when the hospital comes in to expand, they would cause you to go up to a new classification as well, so
They didn't, they didn't actually add much for
They don't add, they don't add much to change our equalization.
Really?
But, I mean, it's not something I can solve or answer right now. But it's something, I mean, this letter of intent basically says that we intend to continue this conversation.
But, Mr. Mayor, I raised that to this board, that we were unequivocally going to find ourselves at a 3A back in June. So it's not, that's not new news to the board.
No, but it's not, I'm not, it's, it's news to say that, should it be part of the letter of intent? Because the board, we may have the capacity, but we may not have the ability to staff and man a level three plant.
Well, so, I mean, if you don't want to provide water and sewer service, and before we spend lots of money on engineering studies, I mean, that's what this, this is what this does. They're going to spend a lot of money on engineering studies and SECA review and figuring all this out, so
So, just, I'm just trying to clarify for myself, that if that is
I think we're going to have to decide whether the, you know, the operation
Excuse me, I was, I was talking, but that's okay. I just wanted to make clarification for myself, that from this letter of intent, it encompasses that. And if I have, our legal counsel's saying that this can encompass that, this bigger than 70,000 gallons, it's really we're talking about the whole thing for the feasibility, then I'm, I'm cool, I guess.
Depends on what this engineering study comes up with.
Right, but I, I'm just a little bit confused here, but how do you, how do you assess capacity without the ability to do it and the resources necessary to do it? I don't see how you say, well, I have capacity, but I don't have the resources in terms of equipment or funding to do it. I think they have to be considered together. So the capacity issue is answered as a whole, an operation. It includes, you know, the reclassification, the necessary resources in order to deliver that capacity. Those aren't separable in my
Well, that's, I was talking about research, so although I was asking for clarification, that if that portion of that, that this letter of intent does not distract us from doing the study, doing the work, and then making a recommendation?
Nope, we fully expect that there will be a full study done and that we would talk about what's needed.
And how we amend it, and what we have to do to do it.
Right, I think a study, I think what you're getting at is a study is going to have to include the physical plant and the management, and the management of the plant.
The resources.
Right, how we're going to manage
All the resources.
Well, I think, I mean, management resources, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think that plays into rates a little bit, and
That's what I was going to say, we might have to decide whether our
And you can charge more outside of the district, the village than
It says it's like, what is the percent, what is it, Karen? So the out of district, the out of
It's the same as
Today it is.
Today it is.
Today it is, we don't charge different.
That's correct.
But I think there's an increase, the more volume that you use, the higher the rate is.
There was But that's for everybody.
The garden, where is the garden, I'm sorry, the gardens is at a higher rate?
They're not at a higher rate, no, they just have the sewer, the sewer
Well, we have the right to, yeah, sewer.
Assessment.
We have the right to go up higher with them.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
What I was going to say, sorry, Karen, because I interrupted you there one time, is that we'll probably have to decide whether this, the increase in revenue is going to cover our operations and maintenance after it's all built. I don't think
After we get to feasibility and understand what we need to do. After we get to feasibility and understand what we need to do, which is the next step. So if this is to authorize the town board to do the SECA and for them to get to the next step, got it.
That's, that, this letter, and if you want to change the address, the right now it's addressed to Mench Gradmer, you can change it to so that it's addressed to Mike Trimble, the chair of the planning board.
That's what I would like to do.
Yeah.
That's probably the best.
And then maybe, or why don't we do it to both, Mike Trimble and Mench Gradmer so that there's a good record that we can go through.
I appreciate that comment, because I think that's good.
So I'd like to make a motion then, to see if the board will accept this.
I would like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like, is there a motion to accept the letter of intent?
As amended with the...
The correction.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? Very good.
I'm second motion.
The mayor?
No, I, I...
I'm motioned, I second.
You made it first.
He second.
He second.
Right.
Before we let Mr. Mench and council leave, we have, the board has expressed a desire to table the other letter that relates to the letter that we delivered to you folks, not to you folks, but to the town. Is that, I understood when we were together that that was a matter that needed to get resolved sooner than later.
That is not on the agenda for tonight, okay? We're not, we're not going to dwell with that. It's not on the agenda to discuss that portion, okay?
But if, it is creating some complications for...
No, I don't think so. I don't think it's by their clear.
Well, the planning board was confused, but hopefully this letter of intent will be specific enough that we can overcome any confusion, and if not, we'll get back to you.
Okay, I just wanted to be certain of that.
So I would like to know who's negotiating this thing, because it's...
Well, we, you guys are going to draw the MOU up, right?
Okay.
That's what I understood.
We think everything would go through John, my idea is everything would go through John Fenton.
I need to have board approval that we execute the studies with the engineers. I know that we're on the verge of setting up a meeting this week or next week. I want to make sure that I do have a full approval from the board to go ahead and do that.
Well, isn't that kind of approved through the escrow?
Yeah.
Because I want things to get a little foggy here. I want to make sure it's...
The only thing I asked for back on the July meeting was, what do we need to do to move forward?
Okay.
I made that specific request at the July meeting. What do we need to move forward? I even put into that, what do we need to do to move forward for the town? Right. That was a request back at the July meeting. Because it was unclear to us where we were going. But I think this is making the first step.
We're here, and also the next question is, if you, if you wanted Mench Gradmer to make a presentation about the project, I'm not sure if everyone's fully familiar with it. If you want that now, or do you want to wait until you get, I mean, not tonight, but we could do it in October, or we could wait until the engineering reports come back.
It seems like the engineering reports, right?
Yeah, and I think we should have a workshop devoted to it. Not on a night with another meeting, probably.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
Makes sense when you have the engineering plans.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll wait till the engineering report comes back and then...
And then we'll set that, we'll set it up, Tori.
And we've already noted for the liaison to the water and liaison to the wastewater to work with DPW, well, we get to that point to start drafting the MOU.
Okay.
So that's down the road.
Yeah, we, it's premature because we don't have enough information at this point.
Right.
And when do we expect the engineering report to be done?
So again, we're waiting, we're...
Roughly.
It's hard to say.
If it's too soon, that's fine.
We wanted it done two weeks ago.
Okay. ASAP, once we get the ball rolling.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, we have time, Bob, so we're, she's been asking, and there was a lot of confusion with the letter of intent.
Okay.
And the engineers, they actually had to draft it.
Yep.
And so we kind of clarified that. We got this taken care of tonight. Now we're ready for the next step. We just want to make sure everybody's clear and that we move ahead and everybody's okay with everything.
Okay, we already voted on it, you're clear.
Thank you so much, and thanks for moving it up.
Thank you, thank you.
Sorry to keep you out of the dark.
Good night.
Okay, Karen, thank you.
Okay, moving forward on the agenda. Treasurers' report.
Okay, the treasurer's report is provided for the month ending August 31st. The tax collector's account ended the month with $1,255,586.67. The general fund ended the month with $84,606.90. And the water fund ended the month with $260,171.79. And the sewer fund ended the month with $485,272.51. Vouchers presented for payment in the general fund, total $78,053.1. In the water fund, $42,081.5. In the sewer fund, $34,092.23. There was a, one bill for the water main project for $106.65. There was an escrow payment in the amount of $4,692.50. And a bond payment for the highway dump truck for $13,018.88. And for the police vehicle principal and interest of $10,453.29. The monthly operation statement is provided. It's on the cloud, but it's also provided to the board with revenue and expenditures through September 10th. The water and wastewater billing and adjustments have been reviewed and signed off by the water and wastewater department liaisons and are presented for authorization.
Do we have a motion to accept amendments?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the water adjustments as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Carry.
I'd like to make a motion, excuse me, to accept the wastewater financials as presented. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Carry. Thank you.
And there are no budget amendments for this month.
Thank you, Karen. Always like to read this in the record. There's always a lot of activity that sometimes surprises us all. Total number of incidents in the town, 21. Total number of incidents in the village, 133. Total number of tickets to the town, 17. Total number of tickets to the village, 75. Total number of arrests were five. Total number of accidents were seven. I'd just like to note that the, due to the additional activities, extra coverage by our police department was provided for the touch-a-truck event at the Star Library. Also a great opportunity for kids, where we have all sorts of municipality vehicles there on display for them to see. We've also been using the speed trailer a lot. During Fair Week, we had a setup on East Market Street near the South Street intersection. We had a setup on East Market Street at different times. One from at 11:00 AM to midnight, another time from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and another time from 12:00 PM, on 8/23 from 12:00 PM, noon to midnight. There's various number of speed reports associated with that, but we use that to, we get a lot of traffic during Fair Week, and it really helps us to give warning to those people who are coming. The speed, you know, these are all due for the Duchess County Fair. Court study. This is for July. The tickets that were completed for both, for both court sessions and mailed in for the month was 113. Revenue from the state is $2,939. The next on the list is the shared court study. There's no report submitted, but I will like to comment on it, that we had on agenda that trustee Lewin and myself met with the town of Rhinebeck, and we reviewed all five proposals that were submitted for the court study as part of our process for reviewing them. Just to review, there was the Benjamin Center, Pattern for Progress, CGR, La Burge Group, and NCS. They all had different price points. There was some differences in the quotes as we reviewed them. Some of the quotes were submitted as a price for each. Some of the quotes were submitted as a total package getting, assuming they were going to do both. And to remind you, this was a shared court study, not only for the village and town of Rhinebeck, but also for the village and the town of Red Hook. So the next step we took in the process was to, the county supplies us with a matrix. We, as a committee, we filled out that matrix and narrowed it down to the top three, which we're now looking for more additional information. And this was agreed to by the town and by us. The Pattern for Progress, G, CGR, and La Burge Group were the three that focused on top. We eliminated the Benjamin Center and NCS as part of that process, all right? We are going to be collecting more information. We asked for a case study from each of them, which we already have received a case study from La Burge Group so we can understand how they execute the process and what they did to give us more detail. And then we'll be meeting with the town again to review that information and hopefully with the town and the village of Red Hook. So, we don't have any other dates or specifications to go into this, but the process is continuing.
Mr. Mayor, is the town and village of Red Hook also doing the same due diligence, trying to narrow it down?
They're in that process.
Okay.
They have not done that yet.
And we should declare that, that we're talking, working together with Rhinebeck and working together with Red Hook, not combining it like in red courts. That's not, that's not what we're talking about.
Oh, okay.
Well, that was, yeah, one, hopefully everybody stood up on the shared.
Hopefully, right, but it's easy to, it's easy to...
Yeah. Okay. Fire department chief. I don't have a report. Do you have a report to, oh, wait, I'm sorry, maybe I do.
Yeah, I was there.
Let me get it.
In the cloud.
Yeah, I got it, I'm getting there. I forgot that was there, I didn't print it out. For the village board reports, September 10th, 2019. For the month of August 2019, there were a total of 100 calls, 24 fire calls, 70 EMS calls, three motor vehicle accidents, and three calls during the Duchess County Fair that NDP handled due to the event pre-plant, and three missed dispatches by 9/11. Correct? We responded for mutual aid five times. So, busy month, very busy month. Next on, on is the fly car.
Don't talk about it for a turn, but... I'll make this quick. I know it's been a long night for you all. So, obviously with the continuous changing of our operations to better serve the community and to make things more cost-effective for not only ourselves, but for the village and taxpayers. Right now, and I use the word chief's vehicle. It's more operating as, as we use it for as a command vehicle. It's not necessarily used by the chief. It's used by, if somebody, if I myself goes away, it goes to the next ranking officer because of the equipment and stuff that we carry in there to be able to handle. And it's into for motor vehicle accidents, to fire calls, to brush fires, et cetera. So that vehicle right now is 10 years old. As you probably have heard, we've looked at and kicked it around of buying a new ambulance. And what we feel is, is that we feel to keep our operations better and increasing it, not buying a new ambulance, but replacing the chief's car, passing the chief's car down as a first responder's vehicle. What we're happening is, when you see the call line here, is we're running multiple calls at the same time. At least three to four times a week, we are getting double calls in the district. What we're doing now is, we're responding with a $400,000 fire truck. What happens with that is, is that not all EMTs are drivers of those apparatus. So now we have to wait for a driver of the apparatus to come and take the EMT. Now, we do carry miscellaneous equipment on there as well. What I'm proposing to the village board is, is that we purchase the new chief's car slash command vehicle, which then we can make the upgrades into that, that can better serve our radio operations, our command system, our accountability system. The equipment that we store in there is, the command vehicle slash chief's car is set up a little different than a fly car. That's set up where it has a SCOT pack and a hand tools, water tanks, or water cans. So when we show up, or whoever has that vehicle can show up, can start either an initial attack, a quick rescue, or get themselves set up for a large-scale incident, be it an MCI, auto accident, a brush fire, or a working structure fire. It also carries all of our paperwork that we need to carry for things that take place on the fire scene when we have to have code enforcement, issued forms to have things inspected and so forth, lock boxes and continuums. So, again, we want to pass that car down. So now we can, now we can manage the second call in the district. Now, obviously, we know that there's, there's, our resources are getting slim throughout and as well as with commercial agencies, they're being drawn all over the place, too. So to adequately serve second calls in the district, or multiple calls, or even auto accidents with multiple patients, we'd be able to have this piece that would be identical to whatever we have in the ambulance. The only thing we wouldn't be able to do is transport. We'd be able to show up, we would have the proper gear, we'd have less people that would be able to get that off the floor. We're not running a $300,000, $400,000 piece of equipment to aid to those rescues, where then we can put one person and run that fly car. We then can turn around and put that fly car on a base-on-base call volume at night, because we do have duty crews, is readjusting our duty crews and having that on as well. Especially when it comes time for the priority four calls that we're, that we're dealing with, with our simple lift assist, public assist call, that doesn't require transport. So that's where the operation is, is we kind of save on, you know, where, you know, let's stick what we have now, let's utilize what we have and a big reduction, as Brandon and I spoke of, of not purchasing an ambulance and going with a first responder vehicle as such. Karen and I, for the last couple of months, have been working how this can be done, looking numbers. She's, she'll be able to talk, you know, give the board what her findings are and that as far as what, how this would be financed and what we would do.
Okay, so as Kyle mentioned, we have been working on this. He located from a Chevy Tahoe, 2020 Chevy Tahoe, at a municipal cost on state contract of $39,847. I in turn have, I reached out to three different municipal lease companies to obtain quotes, and I received two back. The one that I received, they wanted a down pay, their option one and two both required a down payment with an interest rate of 4.62. That was community leasing. Real lease came in with a five-year municipal lease with an interest rate of 4.61. And the first payment, no down payment, first payment due July 1st of 2020, which would allow the fire department to plan and put it in there next year's budget. And that five annual payments would be $9,032.10, and at the end of the five years, the village would own the vehicle.
And what would be the total cost for financing?
I didn't amortize it out, but, I mean, it's...
Would you say 4.5%?
Yeah. It's probably about $6,000, because it ends up being nine times five, 45.
Yeah.
Right, and, and it's, like I said, with the, with the, with the five-year municipal lease, they just kind of amortize out the principal and the interest and kind of load up the interest on the top, and then it goes down towards the last, last four, five years.
So you recommend we don't get a bond? This is, would be a lease instead of a bond?
Well, I recommend, I recommend you don't get a bond so you don't have to deal with closing costs and I think you may get a slightly better rate if you did a on anticipation note. However, you would have closing cost and you would have fees with that. So I think this kind of would encompass all of that.
It's one thing you mentioned, this defers to July 2020.
Correct.
Right, so our first payment allows us to go through our next budget cycle.
Right, so, yeah, we can actually budget for it.
And plan.
And Karen and I looked at, and we looked at the options, is, I mean, obviously with Karen's report, you know, we've been doing... with Karen's report, you know, we've been doing very well for our capital reserve fund. And Karen and I just spoke on Monday of offsetting a little of that. We have, what we have put into our capital reserve fund each year to go towards equipment, we can make adjustments, I believe, for the 2020, '21 budget year to offset that, and I'll round it off to $10,000. So we're not taking, so we're still putting very close of what we allowed to put in each year to when it comes to the bigger costs downstairs.
But it's not adding to your operation budget?
Correct.
Because you've, you're going to offset it with what you put in.
You can offset it.
Correct.
I mean, this year, we put $40,000 into the capital equipment fund. I mean, granted, we need to put money in there because this stuff is expensive, all right? So it's, it's important that we continue to build that fund to lessen the debt going forward in the future.
And this allows us with this, it gives us an opportunity to build it up for the future, when we look at our operations and where we are in five years, you know, where we are in three years. And it just gives us a better, and again, the biggest thing is, is giving our EMTs the opportunity that can, that can respond to these calls that are happening in the district and putting it on a call basis, instead of, again, running a $400,000 piece of equipment to somebody that needs a lift assist.
No, you just thought, so this, of the fly car, it could actually, doesn't have to stay here?
No, no. It will probably, it will be, it will probably be assigned out.
To be able to respond.
It'll be assigned out for people to respond, especially...
Because we have a duty, you guys have a duty roster.
We have duty, we have duty rosters, and there is enough manpower where the duty rosters can be split up. So it could be on a rotating basis, where if the ambulance is out, doing a transport of priority one, two, or three, the second call in the district comes out, it'll be the fly car's responsibility to handle that call that does require a transport, so that we don't have to eliminate a delay in response from neighborhoods or from the agencies that are based out of this area.
Chief, one question. So it's about $40,000 for the vehicle.
Yep.
How much is it to, to create the command car? You're going to need radios, electronics, et cetera, which, it'll be moving from the original...
Yes, a lot of the, some of the stuff will be moved over, a lot won't, because it will be taking the same role as an emergency vehicle. It's going to be about $8,200. I'm still fine tuning those, but looking where Karen and I look, because nothing would fall under, you know, the cap that we have for equipment and stuff. So that would come, that would, as Karen and I spoke, that would come out of our repairs and maintenance, that things have got to be installed into that.
Okay. So it's not, okay, you answered the question, which is, it's not like $25,000 worth of radios or something?
No.
Okay.
But it's not a stripped-down car when you buy it?
No. It comes in, a lot of the costs is, is these state-bid vehicles are the game, you know, you know, one year it's a Ford, next year it's a Tahoe, or a Suburban, or so forth. They come wired and everything. It's, then they hook up the equipment. It's the way the state vehicles, you know, come, because they're a police package vehicle, basically.
So, it's cost money, but it's not crazy money?
It's not crazy money. Not compared to what it would cost if, what, you know, we originally, I think, and, you know, and a few months ago that we, that we discussed with the mayor and so forth. You know, it gives us an opportunity to, you know, what, what you sent us today to work on that, so that, again, we're eliminating the cost.
Absolutely.
Is, is the command car dispatched to every incident at this time, or how does, how does that, how does it work?
It goes, it goes to, it goes to every call. I mean, it responds to over 417 calls a year, basically. I'm not saying it goes to every call, but it goes to the majority of calls. Like I said, if I'm out of town, it goes to the next ranking officer or the officer that's going to be in town that will have that vehicle. So it can respond and start the initial assessment, the initial size up and everything for incoming equipment.
It's like a very viable solution.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay. I don't have any other questions either.
No.
Yeah. I'd like to make a recommendation for a vote, please, that we accept the 2019, is it 2020?
2020.
2020 Chevy Tahoe on a five-year lease at an interest rate of 4.61, deferring payments to July 2020, now for the purchase of the, replacing and retrofitting the command car so we could have a fly car.
Correct.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained?
Thank you. Thank you, Board. Thank you very much. And Karen, thank you for all the work you did on this.
Don't leave. Can you talk to Michael Slavy, please, as, just, the next thing on the agenda is, you have a new member.
Yes.
We always like to see new members join our volunteer fire department.
Yep. We have a new member that moved here from Colorado. He does come with experience. He doesn't come with New York EMS experience, but he does have experience in wilderland search and rescue, and their form of EMS out there, has been very enthusiastic, comes down every Monday night. We haven't had him on calls yet due to tonight's approval, so we make sure everybody's covered. But been very active learning our operations and so forth. He is going to be enrolled in the fall EMT class that will be held, and we're looking forward. It seems, it seems like he could be a very good fit for our department.
Great. So he's EMS and fire?
He's going to be EMS right now.
What's this person's name?
Michael Slavy.
Slavy. S-L-A-V-Y.
Yeah.
It's in the cloud.
Yeah. Nice to hear it from the chief.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept wholeheartedly a new member to our volunteer fire department, Michael Slavy, to join.
Second.
Wholeheartedly.
Wholeheartedly. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Very good.
All right. Thank you again.
I'd like to see the rankings.
Thank you.
Building, planning, and zoning. Mr. Corchak.
Thank you, Mayor. Hold on one tiny second. So the monthly report for month of August, there was a total of $1,150 collected from the number of building department and planning board activities. The building department issued one CO and five building permits for a total of $900. And the planning board collected fees and approval requests for $250. And that is the August monthly report.
In addition to the building planning, I'd like to talk about the resolution for a result of our public hearing on August 27th, I believe, right? August 27th. We had a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant 2020. At that public hearing, there was a lot of community input, and it was desired that we want to improve the walkability of the village of Rhinebeck and to improve the connectors within the village of Rhinebeck Center. So I would like to read the resolution for that. In fact, this is a resolution authorizing the establishment and working framework of a walk bike Rhinebeck, oh, wait, this is the wrong one. The committee, where's, I'm sorry. Chief Pat has this in 2020. Does anyone?
No, it's, it's, it's got the wrong headline on it. It's got the right body.
It's got the right body. That's what I thought. Yeah, so I'm going to change that. This is a resolution authorizing the Community Development Block Grant 2020. We will amend the title to this thing, and for the activity title. Whereas during the course of the meeting of July 9th, the board input, well, this is really, again, another correction. This is not the form that I had at home. On August 27th of the board, input from citizens and group has been received and considered at a very productive public hearing on August 27th, with residents who talk about ideas for submission to the Community Development Block Grant for 2020. And whereas the sidewalks contribute to pedestrian and motor safety, installing a new sidewalk from Montgomery to Oak Street along West Chestnut Street would make walking to the parks and library on that route easier and safer, plus serve the residents of Oak, Prospect, and Chestnut by providing safe access to the downtown. Whereas there was an agreement from the community that walkability and bikability were important to the village residents, and this project meets that criteria. Now further be it resolved that the 2020 application to the Duchess County Community Development Block Grant program for the above referenced activity is approved. Be it further resolved that the submission of the application to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development is authorized. Okay? So we're, we're on schedule with this. Our next deadline is October 4th, if I remember the schedule correctly.
Correct.
For getting into the, a letter of intent into the county for approval of this. We have met with our engineering Crawford Associates, and they're in, doing a feasibility study to make sure that we can afford it within this grant before we write that letter of intent. Right? So that'll be the next phase. So I'd like to have a motion to accept the Community Development Block Grant 2020 resolution for sidewalks on West Chestnut, for sidewalk on West Chestnut Street.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Good. Discussion?
Yeah, do you want to, I was just going to say that. You have any discussion?
Just with those revisions you made?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Well, I, yes.
Yeah, the ones that you articulated?
Yes. Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, let me just clarify one thing about the October 4th deadline. First, Pat had the prudence to establish a login that I can use, and Donner and I actually sat yesterday with Pat, and then we sat separately, Donner and I, to size up the grant. The letter of intent, we probably want to do that sooner than later, because it, all it will do is allow us to actually complete the application. So if we took, if it turns out that the feasibility study from the engineers, like, you can't do this for $150,000, then we abort right then. But the reason to do the LOI sooner than later is because the county needs time to approve it. So I don't know if we wait too close to the October 4th deadline, maybe they say we need a week to approve this, and now we're really encroaching on the actual deadline.
I, I have a commitment from our engineering to have their feasibility study done by next week.
Well, no, no harm doing the LOI, though, so...
Right. In, in parallel to this, I'm assuming the grant committee is often starting to write the paperwork and get this in place.
We can't, because they won't release the application until they have approved the LOI.
Really?
Yes.
We can't even see what the question is.
Yeah.
What a bummer.
It's a bummer.
That's a bummer.
Right.
But that's why we wanted to wait for the resolution to get approved by the board tonight, which we knew it would, Gary. Then we do the LOI, then we can see the application.
Well, we're going to, we're going to have the feasibility done next week. We can get the letter of intent in. If we need a call meeting to get it in, let's do it.
Oh, no, we can, we can log in and do that right, we could do that tomorrow.
Okay.
And I'm suggesting that I do that, because it doesn't commit us, and if the costs are too egregious, as I said, we abort. But if the costs are reasonable, then we'll be glad that we get it sooner than later.
Right. I think we're saying the same thing. We're on plastic. It's a complete... Okay. Highway Department?
North Port.
Water Department?
Not a lot of things to talk about. The, there was a power outage, but the power was restored on August 7th, and the power restored August 8th at both the plant and the Violet Hill storage tank. They cleaned the flock tanks. The dredging is continuing, continuing with the lagoon, but it's finishing up, so we're going to have to decide what to do with the materials, but I'll get back to you guys on that.
Okay.
We did have the pre-bid meeting on the waterline project, and a lot of folks attended. There were, I think, I believe, six representatives from six different companies, and well over a dozen people have asked for the bid package, so fingers crossed, but...
What's your date?
The...
18th?
Yeah. 9/18 is the bid opening.
Can I just interject on the water?
Yeah.
Project? I just want to let you know that I did just today receive the bonding documents from our bond counsel, and when Rich was here, I had him sign the letter, the attorney letter, so I'll be executing those documents and getting them back to Douglas Goodfords.
Oh, good. Good.
So that's just a formality. There's nothing we need to do since we've already...
No, because you've already, you've already did the resolution.
Right.
But we got an EFC rate of 1.2.
So I was just going to say, this is like...
That's huge. That's huge.
Yeah. And we, so...
That's the gravy. I mean, we didn't, that's...
1.2%?
Oh, my gosh. Good. What's our rate usually?
Now, there is a, there is a caveat, though, with this. And the caveat with this is that it's two years from the first payment or one year from completion. In other words, you close out the grant. You close, you close out this loan.
Right.
So...
Two years from what?
Two years from the, from the approval of, I forget the wording now. It was, it was a two-year criteria or one year from the start from completion. So in other words, two years from, two years from the start and/or one year from completion.
Okay.
I think their, their point of it was to keep this project going.
Keep the project going. You have to finish.
Get the project done within the two years and start with the...
It kind of times out in 2021.
Right.
So 2021 is a, is we need to...
Is when we start paying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have this gone.
Fingers crossed. Hopefully, we'll find somebody that we like on the 18th of September.
Yeah, it's moving right along.
Yeah, so it's not, it's just that it's not SCOT-free, because we got to, hopefully we're going to get some bids and be able to move forward.
Right.
All right. Waste water?
Mr. Mayor, the major items recovered. Thank you, Board, for the grassy me of discussion. I'll just read off the top numbers. The wastewater for the month of August treated 4.2 million gallons, 32, I'm sorry, 37,500 gallons of sludge processed, and 4,121 pounds of sludge processed. The one thing I do need to share with the board, we discovered only within the last 36 hours, there's a dwelling, a property, 7 South Street, that we've been charging monthly sewage connection fees. They're not connected. We need to reimburse them.
And they've been paying.
Yes, yes, yeah. We've been rendering bills. They've been paying, and we have discovered that's not the case. That they're not connected, they're not using the sewage. Brian personally reviewed it. So, gentlemen, you'll find a voucher for $4,090.82 that, you know, we're obligated to refund to the, to the customer, the non-customer.
Usually, it's the other way around. We have a bootleg connection, and then we back invoice people when we discover it.
Good find. I'm glad we're...
Yeah.
I hope they're happy, right, Karen?
So, thank you.
We told them, they didn't tell us. We were able to tell them that they weren't connected?
No.
Or they, no, they, they discovered it?
No, they questioned with Chrisy, but...
We've edited it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I, I'd like to have a motion to accept all of the department reports as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? So carried. Onto committee reports. The first is the Autism Committee Report. The board has had for quite some time the full report that we submitted for completion of Phase One of the Autism Community Support Initiative, which ran from November till June of this year. I'd just like to highlight just a couple few things, that this was a very community approach and initiative to facilitate the design of supporting needs of individuals with autism and their families, with businesses and organizations in the village of Rhinebeck. And that throughout it, we had several goals and established a mission for this initiative. We had over 200, we had 255 people attend open forums to learn about this. We had 58% of our businesses within the Village Center actually pledged to do hashtag one thing, Yahoo. That's fantastic to be able to help those people and that was total 53 businesses. The committee, you know, we worked through a committee which is made up of key stakeholders within, within our village to drive this plan and we're now working on trying to go for Phase Two. With the Phase Two approach is to continue to expand to be a supportive community and have this a self-operating thing that will happen within the village of Rhinebeck and hopefully get additional grant money to help us proceed to do that, which we'll be applying for in the near future. And I'll bring that to the board's attention when that happens. That's the autism report.
Excuse me, I just have one question going back to wastewater. Did you want to present the roof?
Uh, well, I did when we had a special meeting, was that a special meeting? I discussed it with the board that we are gonna need to look at the roof as well as, um.
Oh, okay, so I'm sorry, I just had it down that you were going to.
Yeah, I just.
Approve it, or that you were gonna.
Well, Karen and I are meeting tomorrow to try and begin working out, we know we're gonna do an RFP.
Thank you.
So I'm sorry, yeah. So as a follow-up from my discussion a few weeks ago, I think it was at the special meeting that we had, I mentioned we're gonna need a roof and so Karen and I are sitting down tomorrow and wanting to begin working through those details.
Do we have a start date for the contractor for the ramp?
Uh, we do not yet, yeah.
We know there's time sensitive.
Yeah, yeah. I'll find out, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Tree Committee.
Okay. Couple issues from the Tree Committee. First of all, there were three applications for pruning and removal, only two of which we acted upon. One came from Bird Court, which I believe has not yet been accepted on the village's roster of streets. So we did not, we did not, heard one from Kathleen Morrison at 71 Livingston Street and the other from the Dutch Rhinebeck Reform Church at 6368 Mill Street. The board, excuse me, the Tree Commission voted to approve the removal of both of those trees. I'd like to have the board to approve the removal of both of those trees. So I need a, I'd like to make a motion to approve the removal of both the tree at 71 Livingston Street and at 6368 Mill Street.
Approved. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
What was the second address, I'm sorry?
Sixty-three, oh, the address? Sixty-three 68 Mill Street.
Okay.
Okay. Couple notes. The tree planting is set for Saturday, November 2nd. The streets are gonna be up in the northeastern corner of the village, so it's Chestnut Beach, Lorraine, that's where the focus is. We'll be replacing one tree that died earlier and adding some additional trees. Now, oh, the other thing is I should say that the mayor has executed a contract with the Davie Resource Group, as we discussed earlier. The Frost Foundation had given us a grant in order to go out and get a, get a survey and management plan done. So that's now starting and it will be, apparently Davie's ready to go and it should be done pretty quickly. And hopefully we'll be able to leverage that grant, excuse me, leverage that study for more grants from the state. And once again, this is courtesy of the Frost Foundation, who came forth with the initial money to fund the survey and the management plan. Any additional monies that happened to be left over in the grant that if we don't expend it all on the first part, will be used to plant larger trees within the village. So one thing about the Tree Committee is that they can basically only afford to buy smaller trees that can be planted with bare roots. So trees like evergreens and other large kinds of trees can't be planted by the, by the committee. In this case, the Frost Foundation grant would allow us to place larger and more different, and different kinds of trees in the parks and in various places. So this has been working out very nicely and thank you to the Frost Foundation. The committee also had a couple other issues, I don't know, I'd like to bring them up to talk about, if we need to move on them right now, but I'd like to bring them forward at least for discussion. One is that it was concerned on the committee that there have been plantings in either the village right of way or what's called the brow, which is the area just beyond the right of way, it's near sidewalks or wires, of trees that are not well-suited to the area, or to those environments. Basically, in the, in the right of way or just beyond the right of way, there frequently conflicts and wires, you have exposure to road salt, difficult conditions, and so there have been more cases where homeowners have planted trees and it has gone, the tree died. So the commission was asking if we would amend the law such as to have a permitting process for people who wanted to plant in the village right of way or in the, just the beyond right of way. I've put together basically a sample application for you guys to look at with some of the reasons. Just like, take a look at it, we don't have to act on it now.
Yeah, this is not on our agenda for tonight.
Okay, well, it's in the, okay, well, it's, okay, it's in the Tree Committee Report, so.
Okay, but this is something you can bring forward?
I can bring forward, but I just want to make note of it. And the other thing, and I'll just bring it forward, the committee would like to expand because they feel like they're at five, they're overtaxed and there's just a lot of duties, but we can talk about it further.
Okay.
Just so I know, beyond the right of way would be like further into the person's lawn?
Correct. It's, it's.
Is that defined though?
There is, there is, there is a definition in our law, the brow law. The brow law was originally created to allow the village to plant municipal trees.
In the brow?
Yeah, on somebody's.
You brought that forward right along.
Uh, no, I think that was existed.
That was, that was prior to.
That was, that was prior, that was prior to me. So basically, this would extend it. We don't have to get in full discussion. I hate to bureaucratize, make another bureaucratic process, but at the same time, the Tree Commission does have publicly available information about how to select a tree, what trees go where, they're happy to provide advice to people, homeowners. So it creates a little more bureaucracy, but it may create a better environment, but we can, we'll pick that up next, next month.
Can I just ask a quick sidebar question? So you mentioned that Bird Court is the responsibility of the developer. Where'd you get that information, from John Fenton?
Um, yes, a conversation from a long time.
I just want to talk with them about that because there seems to be some confusion about, you know, maintenance of that whole area.
Right, whether, I don't think it's been, my understanding was that it's not been accepted.
Accepted, right, great, good. Thank you, sorry for the interruption.
Environmental Report. The Environmental Committee had, has always been approved for a six-member committee. We've been running at five for over a year now. And sometimes it's difficult to find the right person, but in a similar case, when Trusty Korsak and I met in a grocery store for the first time, I happened to run into another individual by the name of Andrew Hunter, who lives in the village, and I'll just read this briefly. Andrew is a homeowner in Rhinebeck for decades, retiring recently from Cornell University, where I, where he taught energy and economics and energy engineering in the Department of Chemical Engineering. You know, the mayor suggested with a background, this is based on previous conversation, that he'd be useful in the Environmental Committee. He spent several decades as a process and project engineer and as a consultant on a variety of environmental and energy issues, both nationally and internationally. The guy's incredible. I would appreciate, you know, if we were to forward this memo as an application to the appropriate Joint Environmental Committee for the town and the village, as the mayor suggested. Andrew did attend our last village environmental meeting. The board was unanimously would like to include him, going forward as, again, the sixth member of our team. Since this is a joint board, I've already taken it to the town of Rhinebeck and the town of Rhinebeck has approved it as well, so now I'm bringing it forward, just a sequence of timing, bring it forward to our board. I'd like to make a motion to improve, to approve Andrew Hunter as a new member to our Environmental Committee.
Second. Well, just a point of discussion, I think it's great that we're adding more Cornelians to the team, so I'd like to second that, at least a second second.
With the Cornell chair.
Yeah, second, second.
Any other discussion?
Sounds very good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carried, thank you. Next is the Veterans Committee. I'll just read what I submitted. I'd also like to thank all the veterans who are working with us on the Veterans Committee with myself, this Dennis McGuire, Gary Rome, Bill McCann, Gary Kish, Pat Coon, and Brenna Claproth and Howie Trout, who was here and left, all right? Our members on this committee. It's a very active group, we're discussing a lot of great ideas and possibilities, but at this time, what I also like to note that tomorrow is September 11th.
Yep.
Right? And in recognition of September 11th, I would like to have everybody just make sure they recognize those people who sacrificed at all and are continuing to suffer as a result of that and that tomorrow our flags for the whole day will be at half-mast as directed by the state, which we will gladly do, and our, our flags at half-mast. But anyways, back to this. One of our discussions is the area of Crystal Lake and the Legion Park, which we've been talking about a lot. And that flag area, which is the stone area that was probably, that was built in the 1940s as part of the Legion Park. It used to be maintained by the Legion, but for many, a long, long time, it's now been maintained by the village. But the update of that stone and the pointing on that stone needs to be readdressed to make it presentable. This is on the gateway coming into the village, so we're discussing how to, we can work to improve the place where the flag is and that stone memorial and the memorial that's on, the plaque that's on there. So with that, Mayor Vassad, he's already discussed, we've, I've already worked with the Highway Department and they will be doing some work and continuing to work on the area to clean it. So if you go by it, you're gonna see a cleanup that was really needed and desperately needed around it. And agreed, we all agreed that the park is a, is a great project at the entrance of the village and needs to have attention, but to keep the plant, but we want to keep it the way it is. We discussed resizing, changing it. We want to keep it just like it was built and, and, but to restore it. And Gary Kish will follow up with contractors to obtain quotes on pointing up the stones and restoring the park area to make sure that we can bid, or if we have to do that, we haven't figured out the funding source, we don't know what it is, but for the board's awareness, this is an area that, working with the committee, we want to restore to its original condition, which would be a nice thing in Legion Park.
So just to piggyback on that, the Legion Park was discussed as a potential area for a tree funded by the Frost Found, for a tree or two funded by the Frost Foundation, so we should probably talk about, talk about some of that, some of that stuff.
Let's work together and figure out how to.
Yeah.
The, the large trees or?
Large trees.
The large trees. Do we claim that a lot of trees are last.
Yes, no, we're talking, talking about a large tree.
Oh, very good. Let's, work, work with us to do that. There's another project that we're working on and that is the cleaning of our doughboy. It's been several years, it was, last time it was cleaned was at 2014 at a cost of $500. It was the last time this was cleaned. It should be cleaned on a more regular basis in terms of its physical makeup and the construction of the doughboy. So we're now reaching out to the, the person who did that, which is RVW Sculpture in Fiskhill, and we're happy to report that they're still in business and to get a quote to see if they will re-clean and, and bring it forward. So I will bring that forward as a result of our next committee meeting to the board to talk about.
Lead in the back.
Yeah, we're, this will include the bronze plaque that's down in the park, I'm sorry, as well as the, as our statute. So that's the Veterans Committee Report. Can I have a motion to approve all of the committee reports as submitted?
Mr. Mayor, I did want to have just a couple things on the grant committee. It should be on the agenda because I.
Yeah, that was, that, that fell off, yes, because that should be there, because you had submitted it.
Yeah, yeah. And just real brief, and we covered, you know, the most important things with the CDBG grant, but Donner, Warner and I did participate in an August 15th webinar. It was with the Environmental Facilities Corporation, EFC, kept Brent in the loop because we thought there might be a way to leverage some additional funds for the water project. We did follow up, it's not gonna be the case, but, you know, as always, we, we apply, we try and it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out, but at least we invested the time. I want the board to know that on October the 22nd, in this room, we'll be kicking off with the consultant that we've been able to engage, Neil Lawson from Lawson Associates, the work that will begin for the, as a result of the Preservation League of New York Grant. And you want to get community awareness and buy-in. Mayor Vassad has agreed to kick it off for us and make the introductions and we'll get, obviously, you know, some blurb of information out. We just got approval that we could begin some, or make some publicity, awareness. They're very strict about when you can publicize the grant and how you publicize it, but we've gotten approval and I forwarded that to the mayor and to Pat, and Pat actually is our conduit for, for all of that. And then, Mr. Mayor, that, oh, just one other thing, John Fenton and Brian Vaccamo and I attended that workshop that actually, Gary, forwarded to our attention in Hyde Park last Friday, which is really terrific. It was put together by Senator Kirsten Gillibrand and they had multiple speakers, senior people from federal agencies as well as state agencies. Good way to network, get some business cards, which we did, I did, and, you know, we'll, we'll keep posted on anything that might develop. You know, what the chief referred to, by the way, was as we were sitting through these presentations, you, the US Department of Agriculture, USDA, shared that they can provide financing and grants for ambulances. So made sure that I got the representative's business card and filing up. Didn't seem like, we saw what you were expecting to hear, but we're gonna, you know, we're gonna pursue it. So that, that's the entire report. Thank you.
Okay, special request. We have Roger Tully here. So Roger has, Roger has submitted a request, so rather than me kind of read this, do you want to just give a summary of what you would, your application, what you would like to use to go with all four?
Can I use the mic?
Yes, please.
Karen, I interrupted you. Did you want to finish the motion for the acceptance of the?
Go ahead.
Did we approve, I thought we, no. Sorry, got interrupted. Can I have a motion to approve the committee reports?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Thank you.
Thank you. As the mayor knows, I've been working on the Autism Initiative video for the village in Anderson and I'm also working with a couple of actors to, on a short film script, but the next phase of that is to try to go, do a GoFundMe to, to get money to, to fund, actually fund the script, the making of the movie. And we need to set up a shot where a reporter's interviewing one of the characters and we need sort of an open room that sort of looks like this. So there, we have no budget, everyone's volunteering and we wanted to find out if we could use this hall on Saturday to film this, this scene. It's a three-page scene, so it, it wouldn't take long, but, but that's what my request is. So, thank you.
Pardon? Yes, Saturday, the room is open. We need to arrange to open it for you.
Okay.
But let's go through the approval process. Any questions for Roger on his request?
We saw the, the application, it was very interesting.
I have a motion to approve the request for Tully filming.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Thank you all.
Roger, get in touch with me and make sure we can get the building open and closed up.
Will do, okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Tree lighting. I want to just give a summary back to the holiday tree lighting, just to remind everybody what's happening with that, because this was an event that was always run by the Rhinebeck Chamber. This year, it's, it's being divided up into pieces. The Rhinebeck Chamber is still very much involved and will be securing and providing the lights, but it'll be divided up where the Rhinebeck Rotary will be handling everything that's in the Rhinebeck Savings Bank parking lot. This is where Santa actually throws the switch, lights the tree, and there's all sorts of vendors and everything associated with it. So the Chamber is handling that piece and they've submitted a request for the Rhinebeck Rotary be hosting the 2019 Christmas Tree Lighting on December 1st in the Rhinebeck Bank parking lot. With vendors, will be set up at 1:00, ready for the public by 3:00 and be closing at 6:00 when the, you know, at the end of the event. They've submitted all their paperwork, have all the approvals from police and fire to this, I'd like to have a motion to accept the Rotary portion of this event.
Second.
To any discussion needed. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The other major component of this, the two other components I'll add to this, is the actual parade, the holiday parade is being organized by the, our Rhinebeck Village Fire Department. All right? And their goal is to make it a larger event with a lot of communities who participate in holiday, fire departments that participate in holiday tree lighting and gather much larger participation and still have some of the existing. So that event application will have to come forward next. So that event application will have to come forward next. Now, you know, that wasn't available yet for us. And then, the tree lighting is going to be done by Dave Tree Service as a volunteer service, which is always already done with light supplied by the Chamber. So a lot going on, but as things are evolving, I think we found a way to continue to hold this event.
Question from Mr. Mayor. Who is responsible now for the maintenance of the white lights that are on the street trees inside the village?
They're supposed to come down.
Yes, that's what, that was my next.
So they come, they're technically, the person who puts them up takes them down.
Right.
Unfortunately, we've had a lot of requests from businesses who want to keep them.
Right.
And they want to keep them up. When they want to keep them up, there's no maintenance program with that.
Right.
So we advise the businesses that want to keep their lights and keep turning them on. It's our desire that we do it, turn them on, turn them off, but since we're getting power from them, we can't really pull a plug.
So, well, it's not a question of pulling the plug, but there was a concern at the tree committee that some of the trees are being girdled by the wires, that they haven't, those wires haven't been moved in a year or two, and as the trees are expanding, the wires are confining them. So there's, they were concerned about the health issue for the trees. It may be too late in the season to remove them now, but certainly before the growth season starts for the health of the trees, those wires should come off.
So when the new lights go up, it's my understanding when the new lights go up, Dave's Tree Service actually fixes those problems, corrects them. I know they did a lot of that last year.
Okay.
And when they restring the lights, they're using the recommendations supplied by the tree committee for now restringing the lights as to not try to girdle the trees as much.
Okay. That's good to hear.
Yes. So I think we're taking steps in the right direction, but if the supplier of the power wants to keep them plugged in.
Yeah, no, that wasn't the main, the main problem was, I mean, there are issues with the warming of the bulbs on the bark and everything, but the bigger issue was the girdling issue.
Yes. Yes. I agree. I do agree. We need to protect the trees. All right. The next special request is the Sustainable Hudson Valley. This is submitted by Vanessa Barosa as a volunteer. Rhinebeck Clean Power, I have a brochure down on my table to bring up, but it's a Rhinebeck Clean Power Expo. Just to summarize it, what they're trying to do is, within the village, they want to get businesses within the village to support a clean expo where there'll be tables set up out in front of it. It's kind of like, tables set up in front of approved stores, stores that approve it, to offer information on renewable energies of all types for residents. So it's going to be a kind of a game. It will start off in the town hall, and you'll be given a card, and your goal is to visit each one of these and learn more about renewable energies as you participate in attending and listening to brochures. There's no selling involved. It's an information exchange about renewable energies. So this is for October 6th, which is a Sunday, from 8:30 to, starting at 10:00 AM, and close down at 3:00 PM. Any questions? I have a motion to approve Sustainable Hudson Valley.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carried. Very good. There's one more, a late one that was added. I think it came in today. I believe it's the same one that I have a printout of.
Which one?
And it's time-sensitive is the only reason that it's on here right now. And this is for Porch Fest by Carol Caruso, and it's called Carol's Hot Dogs from Second Street, Andrew Road, Hyde Park, New York. And it's to participate in the Porch Fest. All of the information is then submitted. The only thing that we don't have is the approval from our police department, which chose and approves these. The Porch Fest is September 28th, I believe, so there's no other meeting between now and September 28th. This has been approved by Porch Fest, but I'd like to make a motion that we approve this pending the approval of our police department, which does the background check.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Okay. Next on the list is the RFPs for our engineering. I'm happy to report that we've had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven submissions for engineering RFP that were submitted on Friday by the deadline for review. All the packages have not been opened, but there's five copies, enough for everybody to review and pick up, and I would encourage the board to, you know, when Pat comes back, I just checked my text, by the way, because I had a text, to see if I'd heard from Pat and I haven't. So no news?
No news.
No news, all right? When Pat comes back and if Pat's available to pick up a copy and will distribute them to the board. But what I'd like to do is to form a committee, and it really is a very small committee. I'm asking for one more volunteer, and I've already talked to trustee Korchak, who so is volunteer because this interacts a lot with what he does in, with our planning, building and planning, and John Fenton and engineering stuff that goes on, if he would be participating. If anybody else wants to participate, I'm glad to ask, but it's up to the board how many they want. I don't care to review this, and then make a recommendation to the board after review.
Are you also going to do it?
Yes, I'm sorry. Myself or another person?
Yeah.
Yes, to make that recommendation. Anybody want to change that, questions to it? I encourage you all to review and look at them as well. All right? And we'll get, we'll make those available to everybody. So I'd like to make a motion that we form a committee consisting of the mayor, Gary Bassett, and trustee Paul Korchak to review professional engineering planning services RFP and to come back as expeditiously as possible with a recommendation to the board for going forward.
Second.
Quick question, is John Fenton also a member of the committee or is he?
Well, that's what I asked, if you want John.
Oh, yeah, I thought he was going to be.
Oh, no. Include John. Amended the resolution to say include John Fenton. Good suggestion. I did not have that in there.
Okay. Thanks, Rick.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carried. All right. Approval of minutes, 8:13 minutes and 8:27 minutes. I have a motion to approve 8:13 minutes.
So moved. Karen, I'm sorry, just.
And we'll get into it, after we get approved, then we'll go into discussion. Do you want to make changes?
Oh, no, but we had, and this, Rick and I did this just this afternoon, but we did put together the resolution for the walk bike Rhinebeck Committee, and we put it in the cloud. I have hard copies.
It didn't make it cut off for time. I'm really getting, I'm going to tell the board right now, things are coming in for the meeting way late in terms of time to get them in front for us to review.
Understood.
Right? And I actually reached out to NICOM to get a recommendation, you know, in terms of how to go forward to address this issue, because we're scurrying at the last minute, trying to understand documentation, even the stuff the trustee Lewis brought forward, I said is tabled. We're not going to move forward on this, even though it came in. The recommendation from NICOM is that the agenda is prepared by the village clerk under the direction of the mayor. All right? So Pat and I have met many times, and we have always set a deadline of Friday before the meeting at noon to have your information in to me and to Pat so that we can review it and prepare for the meeting and get the information out so the board has a chance. All right? So going forward, including this meeting, all right, we need to follow that process, you know, to have due diligence and be able to speak about and understand what we're dealing with. All right? So I would like to ask you to table that until the next meeting, and you bring it forward at the next meeting for discussion, because there's not been enough time to digest and review that information.
As someone who's been guilty of doing this, I understand what you're doing.
Okay. So.
There are, I agree, and it's been known that Friday is the cutoff, but sometimes there's exceptions. I mean, this development with the sewer that wasn't connected, and I need the board to sign off on a voucher, you know.
Well, but you as a liaison have the authority to sign off on the vouchers. That's already one of your approvals. We then approve that. Right? So that's part of, that's within your scope of responsibility to sign off on that.
But I think the board would be right to know.
It's great that you bring it to our attention, and that's superb, but that is within your authority to work with whatever, resolve disputes, resolve discrepancies, make sure those are done as the water, wastewater, that's within your purview to really take care of. Okay?
Understood.
All right. So going forward.
We'll exercise our best efforts to.
Friday noon, or it's not on the agenda.
Fair enough.
So Karen, please put that in the minutes.
Hold on.
I think that's absolutely correct.
We, I also understand that there's going to be times when we're going to have to do emergency things.
Yeah.
Right? And an emergency thing can be brought forward to me. We can make a decision jointly, you know, by the trustee who brings that emergency forward, and we can decide whether to put it and move that forward, given that that emergency happened. So, because we need to also prepare for emergencies, but I want to reserve that for emergencies.
It's emergency business.
Okay?
Rick will punt to next month.
All right. Back to the minutes. I have a motion approved 8:13 minutes.
Second.
All right. Discussion. Any discussion on the 8:13 minutes?
Except that the heading is missing, they were perfect.
Put the one that's already passed in.
Yes. No, I think he said Village of Rhinebeck.
Well, usually, we have this headed.
Yes.
Oh, 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 it's not.
We can put that. All right. All in favor approving 8:13?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried. I have a motion approved August 27th meeting, which is our special meeting for the Community Development Block Grant.
I'll make a motion?
I have a second. Second by Brent. All, any discussion?
Really good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Okay. Again, there was lots of correspondence this month that was put on file, and so it's out there for everybody to read on our website to review and review all of that information. The next thing on the agenda is personnel issue for vacation buyouts. Let me just move to that because I don't have those printed. The first one is for our highway employee, Thomas Johnson, is requesting a buyout of 216.75 hours. This is in order to keep Tom at the threshold to avoid not losing his vacation as defined in the contract. All right? Is what it's for. So he chose to do the buyout rather than take the vacation. I have a motion to approve the vacation leave buyout request for Tom Johnson for 216.75 hours.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Next is for Scott Min. Scott Min has requested a buyout of 29 hours of his accumulated vacation leave for the same purpose, to make sure that he does not exceed the cap that's in our contract. I have a motion to approve Scott Min's request for vacation buyout of 29 hours.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carried. Okay, thank you. And last, I'd like to always, as always, recognize our employees who have achieved those levels of anniversaries, again, to recognize Scott Min for 24 years of service that was effective on 9/8/19. Scott is a valuable person in our village highway department. I'd also like to recognize our plant chief, our water treatment plant chief operator, Brian Alex, for six years of service as of 9/13/19. So congratulations to those employees who have dedicated their talents and expertise to the village of Rhinebeck. Okay. That includes the regular meeting. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting for the village of Rhinebeck.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Very good. Thank you.